All the meetings are ordered at six three, please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
The United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call please.
Mayor.
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 President.
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 Present. Alright, um, the first meeting, um, we have is a public hearing regarding the annual appropriation ordinance. I guess, uh, Michael Peterson, our finance director, to address the board.
Thank you, Mayor. So before you, you have the annual appropriation ordinance, uh, the statute of legal limit of the village's expenditures during fiscal year May one twenty twenty five, three thirty twenty twenty six. First day statute, the ordinance must be passed within the first quarter of the fiscal year, which is well within. This appropriation ordinance establishes the maximum levels of expenditures that can be made if adequate revenues are available. This does not necessarily mean that sufficient revenues will in fact be received to make such expenditures. Therefore, the village develops an operating budget to establish realistic spending limits as well as to guide and control spending. Um, I'll just note that the appropriation ordinance is a prop, uh, the numbers are practically fifty percent over the budget numbers. Um, with the exception of, uh, three million, three million dollars in the general fund, which is identified as a transfer to central business district. I mentioned that during the budget that, uh, I originally thought that monies would be going into, um, one other fund and then would transfer over into the central business and I found out that the sales tax was going into the general fund from the state. So I had to make a little switch there. Um, the formatting change, uh, there's a format change from last year. He's no debt. It looks a little different. Um, one reason is that I separate items related to the tax levy. Like I am rep social security, police protection, audit liability insurance. I separate them out. So when we're doing the tax levy, then you could see the items more clearly, uh, what we're levying against. And it's, uh, recommending the, that you adopt, uh, the ordinance. No question.
Um, is there any public comments about this item?
Any.
Any questions from the board? If not, I'd, uh, entertain a motion, a second to, uh, close the public hearing on the appropriation.
So.
Motion trustee Peterson.
Okay.
Second trustee McNeil, roll call please.
Mason.
Yes.
Luther.
Yes.
McNeil.
Yes.
Yes.
Pierce.
Uh.
Peterson.
Yes.
Six voting yes, uh, meeting is adjourned at six thirty-three. Um, I'm now going to call to order the committee, the whole meeting at six thirty-three. Roll call please.
Mayor. Mayor.
Here.
Here.
President.
Peterson.
President.
Mayor.
Present. Alright, um, mayoral, mayoral reports, um, again, we have the, uh, fourth of July, uh, parade and holiday coming up here, uh, next week. So the village hall, uh, will be closed on the fourth of July, uh, in recognition of the holiday. Um, we have some reappointments that I'm going to, uh, go to first, which, uh, should be fairly quick. I'm going to ask the board for a motion and a second to reappoint, um, Shelley Christian to the police pension board, Brittany Carsonson to the planning and zoning, uh, Jim Weber as the chairman of the parks commission, Christopher Hartman to the parks commission and Nicholas Picard to the police fire commission. Um, I motion trustee Mason.
Second.
Second trustee Pierce. Um, any discussion on this item? Wait, uh, roll call please.
Mason.
Yes.
Yes.
McNeil.
Yes.
Park Minus.
Yes.
Pierce.
Hi.
Peterson.
Yes.
Six voting yes, motion carries. Uh, Mr. Picard is here, so I'll ask him to come up and, uh, be sworn in. Thank you for coming tonight.
Right now, yes, yes. Everyone else is after, after.
I, Nicholas Picard, having been appointed as member of the police and fire commission with the village of Antioch and the county of Lake, do solemnly swear affirm that I will support the constitution of the United States and the constitution of the state of Illinois and will faithfully discharge the duties of police and fire commission here for the best of my ability.
Thank you again for, um, agreeing to serve on that board. Very important to everybody here, so thank you very much. Um, we have a promotion as well tonight. I have, uh, the honor of promoting officer Jordan Oliver to sergeant, uh, chief judge.
Sure, Jordan, if you want to. No.
Those board and community members, tonight I come before you for the motion of officer Jordan Oliver to the rank of sergeant. Jordan joined the police department in January of two thousand nineteen. From the start, he's shown a strong sense of duty and a steady, reliable approach to the work he does. While attending the police academy, he was elected class vice president, an early indication that others quickly saw his ability to lead by example. Before beginning his law enforcement career, Jordan served four years in the United States Navy, including two deployments to Iraq. That experience helped shape the discipline, focus and calm under pressure demeanor he brings toward apartment every day. Since joining APD, Jordan has stepped up in several or ways. He serves as a field training officer, a supervisor with the Lake County Major Crimes Task Force and a board member with the Illinois Division of International Association of Identification. That's a mouthful, it must be really important. He also sits on our police pension board. Most recently, he was named finalist for the major crimes task force evidence technician of the year. Recognition of the professional detailed work he brings to some of Lake County's most complex investigations. As he takes on the responsibilities of a frontline supervisor, Jordan already brings valuable experience from home. He and his wife Amber are raising five kids, Sadie, Jonathan, William, Maggie, Gunner. That's just not parenting, it's resource management, crisis negotiation and incident command. That's all before breakfast as he was served. If he can run point on that operation, I'm confident he can handle a troll shift. We're proud to have his wife and his children here tonight, along with members of his extended family, several colleagues from the major crimes task force. At this time, I'll ask our village clerk to administer the oath of office, and I would also like to invite Jordan's father, Stephen, to join him up front. Following the oath, Stephen will pin Jordan's badge, a symbol of the trust and responsibility that we placed in him as a sergeant. It's also a meaningful moment between a father and a son. Congratulations Sergeant Oliver, we're proud of your hard work and are confident in the leadership you bring forward.
I, Jordan Oliver, having been appointed as sergeant of the village of Antioch Police Department in the county of Lake, do solemnly swear affirm that I will support the constitution of the United States and the constitution of the state of Illinois and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of sergeant to the best of my ability.
Congratulations, congratulations. Gonna take a picture with the family of her, her kids on there.
Family.
Getting in a picture.
No comments. Last two you have, eh?
Congratulations. I only have one complaint. Steve, you can't wear that hat here after they beat the Cubs two nights in a row. You're going for the sweep, not for the sweep tonight, alright? Alright, not one more game, but yeah, alright. Love it. Congratulations. You guys don't have to, uh, stick around for the rest of the meeting, so thank you for coming in here. Alright, alright. Good luck, except tonight it was a, it was a win. Alright, on to the, um, regular meeting. I have three citizens who signed up to address the board, so, uh, Lori will, um, read the preamble of the citizens portion.
We have opportunity to speak to the partners provided by the public without comment, make well business of the board or appreciate terms to stakeholders, villagers, for that same questions. The board starts doing fast decisions for village, public, and public is very helpful. The board must protect stability in the form of this meeting. Please be respectful for the duties of board and democratic justice and fairness tonight. Please state your name and address your comments to the board. Please limit your comments to three minutes. Please be fair and courteous and the board request that you not make statements that are personally disrespectful or offensive to members of the board's staff. The exempt law full speakers are of the consideration of the mayor's rights, limit the number of speakers taking comment or repetitive nature and a limit on the amount of time to make comment. This board does not respond to comments or attempt to answer questions during the public comment period. Um, all three.
Every night I come, well, whenever I come to the village's board meetings, there's a ongoing thing in my house. My wife says to me, behave yourself. And I'm not gonna behave, I'm out. So, you run into my wife, I'll rather behave myself. But I'd like to make a comment on the quarter report that I attended on Friday. I'd like to applaud the mayor, those trustees and staff. I found it to be prominent, insightful. It was open minded, respectful to all, and I would like to say, uh, that he's a perspective of the time and future needs of the village. So it does show good government, it was transparency, responsibility, accountability by the mayor and trustees. I hope this helps the village in the future, but I do applaud.
Appreciate it, thank you.
Um. Greg Goldmogan?
Better be just as nice, Greg.
My name is Greg Goldmogan. I'm on the, uh, well, for many years, I've been on the board of the Oakwood North Property Owners Association. And I welcome this opportunity to address the village board, the board in a manner that's been well overdue in trying to get it addressed. So honorable Mayor Gardner and members of the village board, uh, I know you've been working with, uh, one of our members in the audience, Michael Mara. And, uh, they reported to us on a regular basis, but he's unable to specifically report any progress that are, we put well. We have made some progress, but not sufficiently in our request for help in the situation with Crosslake. I therefore felt it was imperative that I also speak to you and emphasize the seriousness of the situation. Five years ago, I, along with a member of the Oakwood North Property Owners Board, brought to your attention critical matters concerning the local water subject, the channel lagoon called, requested actionable solutions that will benefit the reference of Oakwood North and the ecosystem alike. We showed you photos of a badly deteriorated culvert under Bridgewater Drive, and you had your consulting engineers there. Their professional opinion was that it should be replaced more later than five years. It's now been over five years to date. Even though there had been no, been discussion about a plan, no action is taken place. The culvert plays a pivotal role in directing stormwater, preventing flooding, as well as providing structural support for the pavement over which, uh, frequent heavy traffic, uh, flows. It is true that the culvert is somehow, somehow still intact, but your own engineers concluded that it was critical to replace it at least five years after their examination. The channel serves a crucial drainage and navigation pathway for our residents. It is also an important element of the village's storm water system, which serves Oakwood North. However, sedimentation, invasive vegetation and inconsistent water flow have become pressing issues. For many years, the lagoon channel had been receiving uncontrolled amounts of silt from culverts located in Wisconsin and Europe, and North Pole through its system. All of the silt we have received from these various sources have created a dangerous condition only as quick month. Because of this safety risk, which is only two to three feet below the water level in the channel, we have been forced to trust the post danger science about the risks posed when using the channel. These problems not only restrict recreational activities, but also increase the risk of flooding during heavy rains. It is imperative to initiate the dredging, which has been discussed with the village for some time now, to ensure the channel remains functional, safe for all. The lagoon, our lagoon is a beloved nature, natural feature and serves as a habitat for local wildlife. Unfortunately, heavy accumulation of silt, deterioration of water quality, algae overgrowth and reduced biodiversity threatened with its ecological health. The lagoon's revitalization needs to be incorporated with the channel dredging and culvert replacement. This will not only preserve the lagoon's natural habitat, but also transform it into a more vibrant and cherished feature of our, of our, uh, subsistence. These efforts will safeguard the lagoon's health and enhance its value as a scenic and recreational asset for residents. It also will help us to once more use our ovals located on the shore of the lagoon. It will also enable the residents living along the shore of the lagoon to once again use this feature as an integral part of their property. As you should be aware, we do not have the funding to pay for these much needed repairs with our resources. Our membership, as you, as we have mentioned before, is not mandatory. So we have to perform many services for our members with students and the few members who join. We have investigated other sources of funding, which we were never able to secure. We therefore conclude that the most practical and affordable solution for accomplishing these needs would be through the special service area, which the village agreed to create for us. We can't do this without the votes, but it has taken an extraordinarily length of time. I am familiar with how this should take, how, how long it should take, because when I worked for Lake County Public Works, it was my job to create special service areas for finance and build multimillion dollar projects to serve various unincorporated areas like in Lake County with sewer and water systems. Because of my experience in creating SSAs, I'm confused about the length of time this is taking, yet even to step one, drafting a special service area resolution to vote on, so the subsequent steps can be taken to ultimately secure the funding necessary to proceed with this project. Therefore, I would like the village to provide our association and residents with a firm timetable that will assure all of us, the village's commitment and sincerity to help us finally repair this integral part of Crosslake. Thank you for your time, we tend to be mattered. I look forward to hearing from you in the very near future with the timetable for resolving this critical matter. If there is any way we can help to expedite this, we are certainly available to do so. I've provided my contact information and its printed version of this narrative which I'd like to hand to the mayor.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. I'll give it to that, thank you.
Mike O'Meara, uh, this is a good mission. Members of the board, I'm, I'm here not in opposition to, to progress, but in defense of, uh, practicality, affordability. And many of our homeowners, small business owners and the families who make this village what it is. The ICC International Code Council, twenty twenty-four building code, while well in intention threatens to impose sweeping mandates that our village simply cannot afford. These changes come with enormous costs, costs that will fall squarely on the shoulders of homeowners and businesses already struggling to keep up with enormous property taxes, grocery taxes, fuel taxes, rising utility bills and general inflation. In Antioch, we're not, we're not talking about luxury developments or high rise condos. We're talking about modest homes, aging infrastructure and working families doing their best to stay affordable. These sweeping mandates may work in large urban centers with deep pockets and dense infrastructure, but here in Antioch, they risk doing more harm than good. For homeowners, the impact is immediate and personal. Even modest renovations like placing, replacing windows or upgrading insulation can easily trigger compliance requirements and add ten to twenty-five thousand dollars to what should have been a simple project. That's not a budget over, but that's the difference between maintaining a home, walking away from it. For new construction, the National Association of Home Builders reports that every thousand dollar increase in home price pushes over a hundred and fifty thousand buyers out of the market nationwide. In Antioch, where we're already facing a housing shortage, the stagnant wage growth, this could, this could stall development and deepen the affordability prices faced by so many. Our small businesses, especially local contractors, HVAC techs and electricians are already stretched thin. These are not national firms with compliance departments. These are our family members, friends and neighbors. They are already being asked to show their new licensing costs, training requirements and equipment upgrades that could push them out of the market entirely. And let's not ignore the renters. And as construction and compliance costs rise, so do rents. In our community, we're over twenty-two percent of residents rent out of necessity. These means, this means fewer options, more displacement and more instability. Lastly, consider the marginal costs and strain on our own municipal resources. Adopting this code could require retrain, retraining inspectors, operating, upgrading permitting systems and expanding oversight, all without a clear funding source. Our village is already working hard to manage the, this, its budget, as you know, just as of last week. This would only deepen the challenge. So I urge you all to do your own due diligence, look beyond the surface of these mandates, ask for benefits and who bears the cost, because a decision like this will be everlasting, much like all the other. Thank you.
Thank you. Alright, um, this is again, the committee, the whole portion of the meeting, so first will be the approval of the June eleventh, twenty twenty-five meeting minutes as presented to have a motion and a second. So move, motion trustee Blue Dar.
Second.
Second trustee McNeil, um, roll call please.
Yes.
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 Six voting yes, motion car, carries. Um, next is item number two, discussion regarding the adoption of ICC twenty twenty-four building code. Um, Howard Campari, the, uh, community development director, will, uh, present this in HR Green is also, uh, here, okay. I think I was looking at Zoom, is here, is there any additional questions? Thank you.
Good evening, uh, my name is Howard Campari, the community development director. So I was tasked with this responsibility of updating the ICC codes. So this isn't something that I decided to do. This is something that we're forced upon by the state. So the public act one oh three dash zero five one zero amends the capital development board, which requires certain building codes standards to be adopted or followed effectively January first, twenty twenty five. They have given us a half a year rest day for us to bring this up, so this is why we're here now in June, hopefully for this to be approved by the board. So as part of this requirement by the CDB board, right, it requires during the current year, which is this year, for preceding nine calendar years with the least respect, restriction provisions for structural design. So basically what, what the state is saying is our two thousand twelve code is no longer valid. It needs to be in three cycles. The ICC has a three year cycle, so it's, uh, twenty-four is the latest. Uh, I call it twenty-one, then two thousand eighteen. So I decided to opt for the twenty twenty-four code, so we don't have to do this in six years versus nine, almost a decade. So in my staff report, I go into details, uh, about, about the amendments, the changes, right? So basically, what I'm proposing to do internally is to adopt the section nine dash one dash one, adoption of the codes, which are the codes that I listed here in your staff report on page two. And then also, uh, concurrently also adopt section nine dash one dash two amendments of codes. That means that's the building codes that we make changes to the codes that are being adopted by the ICC. So there are eleven codes, right? I'll just read them out. The first one is the international building code, which is commonly known as IBC. The second one is the IRC or international res- residential code. These are usually the two codes that we review on a constant basis for permits and applications and stuff like that. The third one is the fire prevention or international fire code twenty twenty-four. International fuel gas code twenty twenty-four. I- international mechanical code code twenty twenty-four. Property maintenance, or it's commonly known as international property maintenance code twenty twenty-four. International swimming pool and spa code twenty twenty-four. Life safety NFPA one oh one. Electrical, the NFPA seventy, national electrical code twenty twenty-three. The current edition of the Illinois plumbing code. And then the final one is the current edition of the state of Illinois energy conservation code. So what I'm proposing is to update these codes, hopefully in the next meeting as part of the regular meeting. And also, I call it, to have this discussion, to have a discussion, if you have any questions in regards to any, any sections of the code or the codes itself. I have here Mike Paplava, who's here from HR Green, who has assisted me in fine tuning these documents and bringing us up to speed. It's like I mentioned in my staff report, we're going from in three year cycles, two thousand twelve to fifteen to eighteen to twenty-one to twenty-four. So Mike over here was very good for us, was very good in creating a spreadsheet, which I also provided as part of the packet tonight, where you can look at how the coach can, uh, each side of it, which I think is informative. Now, what did I do? Besides doing a lot of research and providing a lot of information? I also sent, uh, letters to twenty local contractors and nine builders, while also speaking internally with the local builders that does construction here. So this is an example of one of the letters that was returned back to me, returned to center. So this was done on June twelfth, so almost two weeks I've given people opportunity to come here to speak for it or against it or to provide comments. So not seeing a lot of people here means something, something good is happening. Now, what did I also do? I also reached out to the fire department, because as part of my staff report, I speak about the fire codes, right, the fire sprinklers and stuff like that. Steve McDaniel, our, our local fire inspector here in village district, right, says everything was good. There's only, uh, there's only a pretty good something about not boxes. But even our fire district understands the fire sprinkler, uh, changes that we're proposing. Because it's, it's a game changer for a lot of builders. When I reached out to the builders, spoke to our builders and our building locally, floodlands, phase three, phase four, Nar Homes, Boda, they all said a twenty twenty-four code that we were fires, fire sprinklers. It's, it's a game changer they want to adopt. So these were some of the criteria that I took into account to modify this. So in my staff report, I go into details on page three, um, explaining what, what's being proposed. So what I'd like to reiterate once again, one in two family residences, a town, homes, less than three stories above grade. will not require a fire sprinkler. While other commercial buildings, these rules under the IVC, International Building Code, section will require a fire sprinkler depending on the square foot as threshold amount. So we still have that provision similar to what we have in two thousand twelve, similar to what we have in our amended codes. So, uh, the staff report was presented to you and also the adopt, you know, amendments of the adopted code, the stuff that I changed, ready, struck out, renamed sections because after so many years, the sections either disappeared or they, they changed. So I'm here to answer, I guess, some of the basic questions here. I have a professional to answer or the pointed questions that this board may have.
Um, I'll start here to come around.
So what's the cost difference on a three thousand square foot home? From one to the other, can, can you pick portions of that? Keep that cost per home down? Percentage wise, what's the cost difference per home? Twelve percent is what I, I understand, about twelve percent?
I don't know. Is that, it's gonna be that high? I don't know what that figure is off the top of my head. Uh, but then it goes to replacements, then the question of replacement that insurance companies have to pick up, which everybody's crying about the insurance rates now. Sure. So insurance rates, someone had to pick up the difference because the way it's structured, different towns that already have this, they want insurance. It's just a fact, there's the permits issues and the inspections. So the cost difference, I'd be curious on what the cost difference is between one, that big dot, or since I'm gonna be the life safety stuff, keep somebody else's stuff out to keep that cost per construction, for remodeling, for development. We all want development, we're getting killed by taxes. Right. So with the newer codes, it's actually lowering some of the design standards. So you don't have to be quite as structurally, um, solid as, uh, what the newer code requires. For example, you have to have a hundred and fifty mile an hour wind load nowadays, but the newer code, you can actually go down to a hundred and seven. So that actually lowers house, you know, certainly you have to make a house, whether it's sheer walls or what have you. So that would be a lower cost. Uh, where you're seeing big increases in cost differences with the energy code, and that's a state adopted code, which we cannot amend one way or the other. You have to adopt it as is for the state and make any changes to it. So, um, that's where any of the changes of, uh, uh, cost with all the code changes have been happening. It's not so much with the actual IRC or IVC. Uh, one of the big costs that would be a difference would be having put in a sprinkler system, which has been amended out of this code, uh, which was done the same way in the twenty twelve that you currently have. So I would have to say that the, uh, difference would be minimal probably at face value of the codes themselves. There might be a this difference of when you're actually vending out or basically keeping the codes the same, how you have them, uh, and taking out any of the big ticket items. It's gonna be pretty negligible, I would say. I don't know that it'd be as high as twelve percent, but I couldn't, don't quote me on that. I would need to actually get some figures for you.
Okay. And then what about if someone did a remodel with the code, would it force the upgrade with the remodel?
Well, it depends on how far they're, they're going. So one of the new requirements with the statewide code is you have to follow the, uh, International Existing Building Code, which has three criteria, three levels of remodeling. So depending on how much remodeling you're doing, you're doing just a bathroom, or you're doing maybe half of a floor, or you're doing four of the pivot floors in your house, that determines what kind of upgrades you can make. There was always a little bit of a, I wouldn't say arbitrary, but a rule among the industry that if you were at about fifty percent of a remodel, then you're bringing up, taking off the code. That was, that's just kind of a vague line in the sand. This code actually puts a hard line in the sand to where, um, okay, once you get to this criteria, this is what you're gonna have to upgrade. And it's actually very forbidden, uh, to people remodeling. It actually gives not only the building inspector, but also builders a, a guiding goal. Um, so with that new code, the changes that have been made have been.
Like the example, you had a bunch of subdivisions that are coming prior for wind blow.
Right.
And, and that's where, and once you do that, that gets under the energy part, where does it stop?
So the energy code, again, is not, it's.
Wind, then they gotta do this, this, and that.
Okay, so if you're just doing the windows, that's all you're doing is replacing the windows. There's nothing else in the house that you have to replace. As a matter of fact, the current code, you, without the existing building code, states that, uh, you're only obligated to go ahead and upgrade, uh, where you're making those changes. For example, if you're doing a kitchen, then you would be bringing for your, uh, receptacles and things like that up to current standards such as making, um, you know, brown ball compliant, maybe adding more of them. And that's only if you're, you try one. Uh, if you're just replacing cabinets, you would have to upgrade it then. So there's a lot of variables that can come into play, so it really depends on the extent of remodeling. Like you were saying, with just the window replacement, you'd have to be in the current energy code, which is a statewide code adopted by the state. So that's the unfortunate part, but it's held pretty steady to where the state's actually amended the code to make it less restrictive and more, uh, like, for, uh, uh, energy, uh, for the insulation and the ceiling. It's R sixty in the current code. They amended it back down to R forty-eight to be in line with the older code. So there wasn't such a big, uh, change in cost. So, uh, something, going back to your original question, replacement of windows is not gonna truly keep the change anything else. Thank you.
Trustee Bluth there?
Um, first, just a quick comment. Um, do either of you have any response to the residents' comments about the additional cost? And you touched, touched on it a little here, but I just wanted to give you an opportunity real quick to touch on anything that Mr. Omar brought up, that there was something he wanted to respond to or, or give us some background on.
So one of the things I noticed, I mentioned, was windows and installation costs and stuff like that. Again, that's a, that's a statewide energy code requirement, so that's gonna be what's gonna be regardless of this quota. Um, and I haven't seen what the new proposal is gonna be from the state with the updated code. Uh, it's, I'm sure you guys are aware, we're the state of Illinois, and how things go back and forth. We don't know what's actually been modeled or what's actually been figured out. Um, but that would solve the energy, it's certainly that. It's also the same licensing and things like that. That's not necessarily the case. Once you're already certified, that certification continues. And then we get continued certification, um, or continued education, uh, to maintain those certifications. So it's bringing us up to speed on these different quotes and stuff like that. It's mandatory for us to do anyway, uh, and usually the whole world licenses, we're gonna pay for all licenses, or in this case, certification.
Um, follow up question is, are a lot of these changes driven by new technologies in the building materials and products? Are, are, is it mainly that, or is it a, a life safety issue for a lot of these? Or is it a combination? I mean, is it just a mixture of where they make these changes too? I mean, there's not someone that just sits there and randomly decides they're gonna change the codes. There's, there's gotta be reasons why all these are done. And, and most municipalities, if not all, are gonna pass this version, if not one similar, correct?
Right, yeah. So what we've been seeing, because we've been helping other communities as well, is saying we're between twenty eighteen, twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-four. Most people are opting for the twenty twenty-one or twenty twenty-four, just a little maybe just to get two more to this, they really have the extended time. And the reason why it could be on one of those three is because the difference between the twenty twelve and going up to the twenty twenty-four is actually quite minimal, considering how much of a jump they're making. There have been changes, and a lot of them could be, um, errors in, in wording or, uh, lessening of code requirement, or maybe adding additional provisions for increases in technology and things like that. So it's beneficial in, in all ways. Um, some big life safety stuff that you get thrown into, and I wanna say it was the twenty twelve that this really started, maybe, uh, uh, two thousand nine is when the residential fire sprinklers came along. That was a hot topic, and it still has been, and still will be, uh, for future to come where we made it optional in here. And if you were installing, you just have to install for that quota issues.
All right, nothing for trustee McNeil? Yeah, oh, one question. Trustee Mason, um, kind of touched on some of my questions already, but as an example, if I were to put on a new roof, does that bring in the energy? Like, do I need to look at new insulation? Does that snowball, or is it just the roof, get the permit?
Well, it, for a residential house, it's just, uh, reaching. You just have to make sure that the materials are listed, which is, uh, it's the current code, how it is now. You're not gonna find a shingle that's not listed around here. Uh, if you are a resident or a commercial, um, uh, business owner or a building owner, the insulation for those roofs might have to be upgraded. But again, that's gonna be determined by the Illinois Energy Conservation Code. And they actually have to where you don't necessarily have to upgrade it if what's on your roof would require substantial remodel, such as you have rooftop limits or skylights and things like that, to where if you were building up additional insulation, then that would affect that and cause your, you know, ten, twenty, thirty thousand dollar project to fifty, sixty, seven thousand. They aren't tight enough of that, and the codes are actually written to take into account cost factor versus safety and energy efficiency.
Okay, thank you. And then just out of curiosity, just because I am curious, I don't have an electric vehicle, but in the residential section where they talk about storage batteries in garages, is that to prevent like fires from these lithium batteries? Is that what that means, or am I off base here?
Well, it's actually to store up energy, um, to, um, so you're, you're not just feeding it back into the system. You can actually, uh, you know, some systems can actually die down a little bit if you're not getting sun as we've seen, uh, the great winters around here, they store. Exactly. So, um, especially for Tesla systems, it's probably why they actually got into the code because companies like Tesla and other things like that have a say in it. And, um, I think for a longest time, uh, people were hesitant about having batteries in garages and stuff like that, just because it could cause a fire. Um, again, not properly installed, but now that the technology has come along, people understand it better. They understand that, yes, you can put safe battery storage in your building, give it some time.
Just one other question, just out of curiosity, because you do a lot of residential work, but what is the D W B system in the residential, that's, yeah?
Uh, drain, waste, and back. And that's actually a plumbing code thing where the Illinois Plumbing Code actually would govern that. So the I, ICC input on that is that that wouldn't apply in Illinois, because they have statewide code.
Okay, I think those were my, all my questions. Thank you.
Trustee Martinez?
Hi, everyone.
Trustee Pierce?
So, um, yeah, I get several questions like this. Uh, trust, trust me to say, well, customs, all. And, um, you, um, one of the, and these are more requirements in this code is, one of them was CO2 detectors are required set in existing homes or new homes or every home?
Uh, actually, the state fire marshal in the state of Illinois requires them throughout houses regardless. So the ICC just reinforces that requirement. Um, they kind of base that off of one another. Uh, you'll see the state fire marshal for state adopt codes, similar to the ICC, they'll use it as a basis. And that is required in all homes. So if you're remodeling, you're supposed, you're supposed to be installing them whether you're doing any work or not for state law. Uh, however, if we're doing remodeling, we'll go ahead and make sure that those are being upgraded as part of the project. Usually when we're seeing stuff like a kitchen remodel, or bathroom remodel, or basement finish or something like that, that's where we would be really looking for, uh, that installation. Other than that, like we were saying, with the roof replacement and siding replacements and stuff like that, that's not necessarily gonna trigger that. However, they should be being installed, uh, if you don't already have one. And personally recommend it.
Let's, let's talk about this energy code that is mandated by the state.
Yes.
Is that mandated in twenty twenty-four ICC, twenty twenty-one?
It's currently the twenty twenty-one I E C C that it uses as a basis. They make a couple of tweaks to the actual written code, and that's actually lowering some standards. Uh, they will be looking at the twenty twenty-four. Uh, I haven't seen any suggestion on amendments, and when I do, they change so wildly that we have to just hold on and see what they're actually gonna go on.
Is there a requirement in there? And probably asking this to himself, if I'm building, uh, something?
I would blame him.
Um, that they have to, if you build a garage now, and then one of you have to put a, a charging station in there? Is that a rumor, or is that true?
No, so you don't have to put a charger in there. Uh, what it says is with a new house, or if you're adding a garage onto an existing building that has electrical, if you're gonna have electrical in your, uh, garage, is that you run conduit in a box for the potential of putting in a future charger. So, uh, depending on how long of a run you have to do, there'd be a little bit of a charge for that.
Um, there is an added cost.
There would be us of.
Just a set or something?
Yeah, it's, it's not an entire, uh, system. It's just a conduit for it. And then for a new house, for example, the, um, electrical panel would have to be sized enough to be able to handle a future charger of four, you know? Uh, if you have a two hundred amp, uh, if you're general two hundred amp, uh, residential service, that should be sufficient, finding out how much other energy you're using within the house. So it's rare you'd have to actually upgrade over two hundred unless you're running some sort of, uh, you know, maybe, uh, possibly a business or welders in your garage, things like that.
My house was built in, uh, I'm being selfish here, I'm taking a bullet here.
Sure.
My house was built in nineteen eighty, it was, I mean, it's got a hundred and eighty service. If I had built a garage, I'd have to stop those that, that, that service for charging stations or whatever. Potential. And I would have to upgrade to the two hundred amp service also?
Not necessarily. It depends on what your calculations on your existing house would be. I myself also have a hundred amp house. Uh, it's surprising how much you can actually run with a hundred amps. Um, so it really depends on what else you have going on in your house. If you have all electric appliances such as a stove, water heater, and things like that, that could certainly push you over the edge. If you pretty much have gas appliances, your energy usage is probably much lower. Um, and as far as putting just the garage up, there are gonna be other exceptions. I don't know what those are off the top of my head. I'd have to look at them a little bit more. But they do keep that in mind to where they're not gonna make you upgrade your service to build a garage. Um, they would just have to, there, that's really more for new houses that are working for it.
What is, what is an A F C I protection?
That's arc fault, uh, circuit, uh, protection. So, um, the best example of that would be is if you were, have you ever slipped, i- if you ever flipped a light switch on and you saw spark? That's an arc that's going on. So there's some sort of a connection going on, um, in the, in the wiring system. So the breakers or the outlets that you use to detect, to detect an arc, uh, will shut down the, uh, will shut down to prevent a fire. So if you get a lot of arcing, you get that easing of the wiring, and then that in turn can eventually turn into a fire, whether it's the, uh, plastic around the wire catching fire or the insulation, the paper on the insulation that's around the box. Um, arc fault fires have been pretty, um, can be pretty devastating because, uh, like if you're in a bedroom, for example, if you have furniture or anything in the living room, press up against your, uh, plug, and the plug's not in there all the way, you're gonna get arcing right there in the outlet. And then eventually it gets sparse or flames coming out of there. And if you have A F C I protection, that should shut down that, um, circuit if that's happening, so that a fire doesn't occur.
Um, I, one thing that chat might be asking, it's been a couple of years, Karen, from the old, elderly involved, traveling around the country, you did the wheelchair and everything. Uh, you have, there's a requirement for all changing stations? That was one of the listings in here? Was that it?
I'd have to look into that a little further. That's, I, I, I don't have that.
I don't know if on page fourteen of this report.
Page fourteen, adult changing stations?
Is that just for businesses, or is that for new houses, or?
Uh, that wouldn't be a hassle. I would have to see if the.
I can see the value, but I could also see the cost.
Is the, I'm sorry, you saw it was on page four?
Four, I think it was fourteen of his report.
Okay.
Uh, page, um, or maybe page, page six?
Six.
Or seven? I, I don't know, there's two numbers. There's, there's six and fourteen, and.
We have it.
Okay.
Thank you. Uh, and yeah, it says adult changing stations, says where additional toilet facilities are being added in IVC section. So IVC would be for commercial use.
Okay.
Uh, so it wouldn't be residential. Um, not saying that you couldn't put it in if you'd like to, but it's not required for the codes. This would only apply to, um, commercial buildings. Uh, would require changing stations, uh, at least one accessible family or assisted use, whether it must contain one. So like the family restrooms and things like that, you see it.
Target.
Uh, things like that.
Does that include like, say, our businesses down here, if they remodel, they're gonna have to remodel their bathroom? Make them ADA compliant. We got a lot of ADA compliant issues, dependency issues.
Um, no.
Air conditioning and stuff.
Sure. Um, not necessarily. So, um, they do take into account with the ICC, things like that, remodeling, uh, undue costs for, uh, remodeling. For example, in Grace Lake with the dog and studs that had a fire, right? They were doing substantial remodeling, and they had two restrooms that were not ADA compliant, but due to structural, um, yeah, limitations, they, uh, did not have to upgrade those restrooms, uh, based on the amount of work they were doing. So that is actually governed now only by the Illinois Accessibility Code, also the federal ADA, it's a, uh, Disabilities Act. Uh, they have certain thresholds for when you have to make those upgrades. Um, so minor remodels, not so much. The existing building code will help actually kind of point out when those upgrades would need to be made.
And the energy code, though, we cannot avoid that if we, if we select twenty twenty one or twenty twenty four.
Correct, yeah, regardless of what you adopt, it's what the state adopts, what you'd have to go by. The only exception to that would be for the commercial energy code, you can make a more restrictive amendment to that code. Other than that, the residential code has to be adopted as is, no amendments can be.
Okay, um. I just want to make two comments on top of this, I have one, one contractor. Come up to me, or we can, he was praying for me and how I was going to affect the building's own builders' involvement if I had both of this code. Because it's going to have major impact on their, their, their jobs and their costs and their bidding. But it was very good, so I I have at least one of that. Um, the other thing I want to mention is, under even the current code, um. One of our residents over in Harvick's house, I've met him, he built in the Asian terms. He remodeled his kitchen. And he essentially almost had to rewire his house to to get the wiring up to code. In the kitchen, and it was like a cost of fifteen thousand dollars extra. To to get all the extra outlets put in place, the drywall changed, the, everything I had, everything he had to do. To get all the outlets where they need to be, you know, and even these, I mean, this is something that's going to be more restrictive than what pop-up outfits. Instead of under the counter outfits and stuff like that.
Sure.
You know, it's very significant, you know, the added cost of.
So what happened with the e- example you're telling me, it depends on on what the, I'm not sure why he would have rewired his entire house. Um, unless you already had outdated wiring or maybe failing wiring, uh being built in nineteen eighties, I would imagine cloth, cloth wiring. So um I'm not sure what that particular example, um. I I don't know what was going on that required rewiring the whole house for about fifteen thousand dollars. For a kitchen remodel, typically, most houses have a couple of outlets already along the countertops. Uh, you're adding maybe a few more on an already existing circuit, so it should be pretty minimal, it shouldn't be anywhere near the fifteen thousand dollars. I am currently remodeling my kitchen, it was sixty five hundred to rewire my entire kitchen, so. That's how much it is, and that's because I was adding outlets, I'm adding cat lines, things like that as well, you know, I'm going a little bit above and beyond what the code would require. So um as far as the cost impact, that's going to vary on materials you use, the. Amount of work that you're doing as well as the contractor you use, uh it shouldn't be any significant impact. Especially on the electrical code, like you were saying with the pop-up outlets now, um, it's actually not required that you install that. Currently, the code requires you, if you have a peninsula, peninsula or an island, that you have a receptacle on the side of it. Um, now with the newer code, the twenty twenty three, that is no longer required, however. If you would like to put one on your island or the peninsula, then it would have to be the pop-up type uh due to safety. I don't necessarily agree with that, but I'm not, they don't give me any say on the code. But um, you are not required to even put that on there if you don't want.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Just see Pierce?
I just have one question, what is a pop-up outlet?
Um, so it's basically, it looks like a round disc in your, you unfortunately don't have it.
Like this, you hit it.
Yeah, not pops.
Plug in this way, it's after the cord goes on the side.
Right, so I believe the concern was with the uh cords hanging over the side, children would be coming by and pulling. Things off the counter on top of themselves.
Right.
Or guys taking your laptop off.
Sure.
Plug it on the side.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Thank you, that's all I, that's all I should say.
Anything on this side again, any follow-up questions over here? Any follow-up questions over here? All right, well, uh thank you all of this along, thank you for your presentation.
Thank you.
This one, what happens if uh we adopt, we go forward? You don't adopt the back, uh, if you go too far forward, then all of a sudden regulations change, because we got a new president. He's trying to make it easier to do business. We went too far and not adopted the lower standard, instead of waiting six years, we got a guy that's in the, based four more years. And to say.
Are you going to amend anything that needs to be amended?
Are we, are we adopting one, we should be adopting the other one, see what it's going to be like, maybe in the six year. We might want to add, say, features to the existing goal.
Well, it's.
So we're stepping too far, and the Habskatt would jump a couple squares, going to the newest one.
So between the twenty twenty one and the twenty twenty four, there's very minimal difference, uh the biggest difference you could really see is in the twenty twenty three I T C with that. You know, change in the requirement for the uh island, um. The twenty twenty one would be adequate as well, but not understanding what's going to happen in the future, for sure, it's hard to predict that.
Yeah.
Uh, and if we were to get there and there were changes made, you can always uh change the current code that you have.
You just punish the people prior that did all the reconstruction, and the newer one, they maybe didn't have to work.
That's, that's, you know, I can't speak to what's going to happen in the future.
Yeah, I know, it's.
I think, is twenty twenty one code less restrictive than the twenty twenty four?
Hmm, nothing uh insignificant that I'm aware of. Maybe some minor changes, and a lot of these changes that you see in these codes are more of moving things around as far as what section they're in. Um, any restrictions are are very, very good for.
Okay.
Trusty Pierce?
I just wanted to ask you a little bit, Mr. Hartman, can?
Yes.
You can't hide from us, really?
Yeah, you can't hide from me either.
See him here once in a while.
Thank you, all right, thank you.
Thank you.
Um. Next item is uh discussion regarding ordinance implementing a non-home rule municipal retailer's occupation tax. The non-home rule municipal occupation tax for the village payback, led by uh Michael Peterson, like, do you have the presentation on slide?
Alright, so this will be the sales tax presentation, and a quick history recap, the grocery tax elimination. So Public Act one oh three oh seven eight one eliminates the one percent state grocery tax in Illinois effective January one in twenty twenty six. This law also allows municipalities to impose their own local grocery tax with local, um. With local governments required to file ordinances by October one in twenty twenty five, if you're trying to have an effective date of one one twenty twenty six. Basically, you don't lose anything if you were to, with the elimination and the adoption of your municipal grocery tax, what was anything, you would just carry on as as normal. The non-home, non-home rule municipal retail occupation tax, um prior to. Public Act one oh three oh seven eight one, which was adopted, approved August of twenty twenty four. Only home rule municipalities had the authority to impose the local sales tax by ordinance. Whereas non-home rule municipalities could only implement the local sales tax through a referendum. Um, with this act, as part of the state fiscal year twenty twenty five budget negotiations, the Illinois Municipal League advocated for. And secured the authority for all non-home municipalities to implement a local sales tax without need for referendum approval. This is an informational slide, so what food doesn't qualify for the state sales tax exemption? Uh, none of the following uh products qualify for the exemption, alcohol, alcoholic beverages, candy, soft drinks. Food consisting of infused and adult-use cannabis, meals consumed in a restaurant, takeout meals, and other food prepared for immediate consumption. These foods are taxed at or above the general six and a quarter rate today, uh the six and a quarter rate is um. Five percent state, one percent uh municipal and um county, point two five, I believe that, that's where they come, the six two five. Um, in Antioch, the rate right now is seven percent because there's two regional taxes. Um, the county is point five, and then the uh Zimitra, R T A, R T A is uh point two five, so that equals the seven percent. Just put this screen up here to give you a couple scenarios, so when you're looking at the dollars, dollar amounts might make a little more sense looking at this. First of all, you don't just add the numbers down and think that I have a math problem, that's not what that is. Um, those who in Antioch currently receives approximately nine hundred thousand from grocery and qualified drugs. So in the far left column there, if you, if the, if the village was to adopt both. The grocery tax and the non-home, non-home rule municipal retail occupation tax. We would still receive the nine hundred thousand, so there's no gain there. Um, but we wouldn't have that new revenue of two point five million, so that's why I'm saying there's additional revenue of two point five, that you don't add the two numbers up. Because we're currently receiving the nine hundred. In the middle column, it's saying that uh there's an elimination of the grocery tax and Antioch does not pass. A local grocery tax, but instead you just pass the um municipal retail occupation tax, the one at one percent. That would bring in uh two point five million, but the additional revenue is only one point six million because we have that loss of nine hundred thousand dollars. And in the far right, it's saying if we add a half percent uh tax. For both the grocery and the municipal retail occupation tax, um we would only receive additional revenue of eight hundred thousand dollars. Because we have four hundred fifty thousand dollar loss from our current um sales tax that we're receiving for the two beverage. This slide is um goes along with the twenty twenty six budget, what was included in the twenty twenty six budget. Um. This is, this is what was in that budget, basically what was proposed, is that the. That the village board would consider adopting the non-home rule municipal retail occupation tax at one percent. So effectively increase the um sales tax rates for, for the um general. Uh, the general, which is general, uh it's general merchandise, I don't know what else is underneath there, I do. Alcohol, fast food, vending machines, the items that I mentioned earlier, um it would move that rate from seven to eight percent. And in the business districts, it would move from eight to nine percent. Um, the food and beverage would move from one percent to zero. So our rate would go down from one point seven five percent to point seven five percent. This slide's just a quick note of um the use of the Placer software that says that um for Walmart. Uh, fourteen percent of the shoppers are from the six zero zero two um zip code, but I believe that's. Um, about half of the residents, I understand, are actually located in the village corporate limits. And Menards, it's at almost twenty percent. Um, are from the six oh oh two uh zip code, so more like ten percent for the corporate limits, I guess. And Julasco is nineteen percent. Which is nine and a half for more than corporate limits. So the Placer software is capable of tracking Antioch shoppers, uh the city, the city that they're coming from. And where they're shopping, uh Placer estimates about eighty five point five percent Walmart. Eighty eight point one percent Menard shoppers are coming from outside of the Antioch corporate limits. If all the sales were equal, almost all the people shopping, Antioch residents would be paying about. Uh, three hundred fifty thousand dollars, which again, it's not really all Antioch residents, it's all the entire zip code of six oh two. Um, but we'll use the three fifty for this um example, um so that would be the new tax that would be paid three fifty. And currently, um, Placer estimates the Antioch residents make up about twelve and a half percent of the jewel shoppers, again, the sales were equal amongst them. Um, the residents, what if they, they're currently would be, would be paying a hundred twelve thousand five hundred, the difference between the two was two hundred thirty seven five hundred, so. Um, that would be the uh increase that you'd be looking at related to the residents, if there's five thousand households. Would you come out to about forty seven fifty a household? I proposed this tax, uh the non-home rule municipal retail occupation tax during the preparation of the F Y twenty twenty six budget. Uh, no one likes additional taxes, I understand this, uh but this, this is the, has the least impact to residents, in my opinion. This slide is uh for illustration purposes only, um it shows that uh what the effect would be if. If we were to increase the property taxes by the one point six million that we're um. That we're needing to uh cover future outlay of capital projects. So the one point six five uh being added on top of the current four point five million would be about thirty five percent increase. For a fair market value of two hundred thousand dollars, um a resident would see their taxes go up. Um, hundred eighty five dollars, just to give you an idea, that's a two hundred thousand market value home. It would have to be at thirty, thirty point thousand, four hundred sixty market value, you can get it all the way down to forty seven fifty, so basically, everybody's property taxes would go up. If we were to just put this all on pocket tax, uh but instead, um we're sharing it out um to the outsiders, mostly, in my opinion. Adopting the proposed uh one percent tax, um the obvious advantage is that this tax, um. Antioch, Antioch would have the, uh one of the lowest grocery tax taxes in the area of point seven five. This, this we would obviously promote, possibly attract more shoppers to Antioch. This tax also favors the low-income residents that can only afford the necessities like groceries. Um. Currently, as I mentioned, uh what's in the five-year financial forecast is one point six million per year. For the five years financial forecast, so about eight million dollars of nine point three million capital projects. Um, is what this covers, so the loss of this, not passage of this. Um, puts a pretty big hole in the budget, we, in those five forecast years of eight million dollars. Uh, we either have to eliminate these capital projects or cut one point six million from the village's operating budget. This just gives you a show of the nine point three, nine point three million that's in the capital, which is capital projects and the equipment replacement. Um. It's been said that the, that this is all the governor's fault, and I'd say it's not his fault politically, he eliminated the groceries from the sales tax being collected. Um, and this is the only message that I can really see the news of America's grocery tax. They don't mention the fact really that he turned around and gave the municipalities the power to pass the grocery, the municipal grocery tax. And he further assigned it to law, the opportunity for municipalities to impose the non-home rule municipal retail tax. Um, which is currently only available to non-home communities, um so the governor's not responsible for existing capital needs. Uh, this nine point three million. This nine point three million, um this is our problem to solve, um the governor just gave us the opportunity to. Pass the uh a tax that was available to the non-home municipalities, um and I think again, I believe this to be. The lowest impact taxes to the local residents, that I think uh, I think this is the solution. Um, so I know you have a lot to discuss, um are there any questions?
No. Um, start down here, yeah. Justy Basics, do you want to lead off?
Yeah, I think we're in a no win situation, we're going to have to.
Yeah, I think we're in a no win situation, we're gonna have to do it, and it's better having to use your tax and profit that profit that you get than sustainable. Yeah, the, 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 the many pay for this, uh, just the residents.
Yeah, and, and I should mention that you couldn't actually put the whole one point six million down on the power of taxes, because for our tax cap, I was just using it for illustration purposes, just to give you a sense of what kind of dollars would be talking to my households, my neighbors. Again, there's, you ask five people how to calculate this, you're gonna get five different, I use the very conservative, like I said, I use the entire zip code, I didn't use the just part of it. But the assumption of everybody buys shops the exact same numbers, that's not realistic, you know? There's large homes shop, spend more money, small homes, getting this.
Thank you, Trustee Luther.
I tend to think I'm not a complete idiot, but I've been reading up on this left and right, and I'm so confused that I, I need some, I need the idiot's guide to understanding this.
Truly, truly.
Because I want to make sure we're, I'm on the same page, because I understand about the grocery tax. And I, I might ask some questions you've already answered, but I want to make sure I'm on, on the one. The grocery tax was eliminated and we need to pass the, which I don't see up there, a new grocery tax, or are we not passing a new grocery tax?
Right, so we, we lost nine hundred thousand dollars from what, what was decided.
Correct.
And they turned around then and said, but you know what, I'll let you.
I mean, no, no, I say, I don't want.
But under municipal, municipal.
So there is no grocery, that disappears, well, there is no passing a new grocery tax, that's not something that's out there.
Yes, there is, yes.
Oh, there is?
Yeah, so they eliminated the food and qualified drugs from the sales tax. So basically, we lost nine hundred thousand, but they said, we'll let you get it back, that exact dollar, dollar for dollar, by passing a municipal grocery tax. You pass that, you'll be right back where you were.
Okay.
We are, we're short from a different reason.
That's a different, that's a different area, I, I, so at the end of the day, what you're asked, has to decide is if, one, we could, one option is to pass a grocery tax, which would replace the current grocery tax, which would be a break even for us budget wise, everything else, on what we currently get. Not what future revenues, what you added in, so, but what we currently are at.
Yeah, so this.
Through twenty, the end of twenty twenty five, January first, when that grocery tax goes away, if we pass that grocery tax, we would be made all on that nine hundred thousand through twenty twenty six, correct?
Yes, and then I'll tell you in twenty twenty six, that it probably be what was said, I'd be about a half a million short in twenty twenty six because of the inclusion of four months of the non-home rule municipal tax and.
Okay, we'll, we'll get to, we'll get to that, but I just want, I just, I, this is the way I need to look at it, I'm like, okay. Because what I want to make sure is that we definitely replace the grocery tax, because I want to make sure, in one way or another, so that we're not eliminating those funds that you've been, like. Now, there's the other alternative of raising additional funds for needed projects, which would be through this additional tax that you're referring to. And that's where my confusion comes in, because even in the, the sample ordinance, that's in, in our, in our packet, it mentions a non-home rule municipal retailer's occupation tax, which I believe is what you're referring to there. But in the same phrases, it brings up a non-home rule municipal service retailer's occupation tax, and then there's something about a service occupation tax. What is the service occupation tax? Because that's when you look up the state law, there's both are listed, and one of them is a service tax that allows us to pass non-home rule service tax, which would then be on services. We're not talking about that.
That is not what we.
Because it's mentioned in our ordinance here too, as an example, and that's why I'm trying to figure out, because it's great, the ordinance doesn't even mention a grocery tax. So, so this ordinance here is just an example of nothing that we're going to do.
There is, so this is what I said, the, the budget was based on no municipal grocery tax, but the inclusion of the one percent non-home rule municipal retail occupation tax, any service language, I would defer to legal. That drafted the ordinance to say, is there something in there that needs to be pulled like that?
Well, see, this, this is where I'm coming from.
It's not our.
I'm trying to figure out how many different taxes we're trying to pass it.
Nope.
So, so we're looking at, if you, can you go to the screen that had our current tax? Okay, so current, we're at fi- one percent sales tax, which is shown there.
Yep.
And then if you go and buy groceries, I don't, where is that on there? Where is the?
That would be the food and drug on the right hand column there, where it says current and proposed.
Okay, so the one percent is the current grocery tax, but then in uh, proposed, you're showing zero, so under that proposal, you're not including a grocery tax. But then you added that nine hundred thousand in, in other areas, so are you not looking to do that, or are you looking just to do the replacement tax?
So that was just trying to stay ahead, so that I had numbers that accused that. I'd like, you know what, I don't want to do all this, I might want to do a fifty fifty or something, and you start throwing out and you are, are you sure that I can have that available for you?
All right, see, this is starting to make sense on what I'm reading, all right, so what you're looking at is if we wanted to be
The middle column.
No, we didn't want to be the middle, we wanted to go pull out, we're gonna, we're gonna do this, we're gonna cover our needs, not make any cuts, do everything we need to do, we're actually adding, I know it's hear me out, I know it's not adding, because we're replacing the grocery tax. But we would be passing two percent additional on grocery and sales tax items, and so basically, that, that tax that you just showed, the seven would be nine. Or whatever, correct?
Yeah, if.
For groceries, I mean.
If you chose to pass both taxes, um, it would increase prior slide by.
And then that, that
Mentioned.
The, uh, the public, wherever, non-home rule occupation tax. That, based on what you showed, does not include groceries and other taxes, so you're not getting double whack by having taxes, so like, if you go to Jewel, you're not gonna get one percent, then the one percent for the non-home rule tax at the same time.
So, um, if you're talking about the central, central needs businesses or?
No, not that, I'm talking about the two taxes, so they don't both, are there any opti- uh, times that both would be applied? Where, where hitting residents with a two percent additional tax, or the one or the other?
So you're now trying to go out.
What I'm saying is if we pass the grocery tax.
But the two taxes don't apply the exact same.
That's what I'm asking, so, so there are no issues where one, where someone's gonna be paying, they were paying the one percent, now they're paying two because they, they both.
So you're looking at the general merchandise side of it.
So most general merchandise isn't gonna be covered under groceries, groceries aren't gonna be covered under general merchandise. So it's either, it's an additional one percent, not an additional two.
Right, I think, I think you just said it, right?
I, I think so, oh, that's why.
I want these, this food went up one pers- one percent, I, I thought this version, it went up one, yes.
Because that's, well, I was also reading, that's why I was trying to read up on this stuff, and listen to some blogs and some other things about what other communities are doing. And they were talking about that service tax as well, so that's why I was getting a little confused. Because it's in the law, in, in the language, and it mentions both, but I couldn't tell if they were just using the same term to define
Right.
the one, or if they were totally separate taxes. So I wanted to make sure we weren't doing a municipal occupation tax, and then a service tax, and then a grocery tax.
There was no intent to ch- to doing service tax, but that's just the standardized language of it, so.
Well, yeah, it's government's, you know, it's a, it's a, unless you're a lawyer, it's good. Um, okay, so, that being said, so our options are, if we wanted to go pull out, is the one and one. If we wanted to replace the groceries, it would be the one percent on the groceries. If we wanted to do a hybrid, it would be, we want to replace the groceries, and maybe do a, a little boost in the other. Then you're talking about maybe a one percent, they, they don't have to be the same, correct?
Correct.
But they only have to be quarters or a half, or.
Quarters?
Okay.
So these again were just scenarios for discussion that.
Right, so it's a matter of where, where we want it.
This is the better we.
No, no, that's perfect. Next question is, have we looked at, and I know what was talked about, it's a quarterly meeting, and, and from all the articles I've read, a lot of there's a lot of mixture in communities on what they're doing, some are picking hybrids, like what we just discussed, some are going all out and doing it. Do we know what the neighboring communities around us are doing? Have we heard, have we had anything from like Londonhurst, Lake Villa, Gurnee, or? Can you fill in on what the neighboring communities are arguing?
Yeah, so I think what you'll see is the majority of them just re- just passed the grocery tax level. There are a few that stand out on, like, what, what, Tonda, which are one home, right there, did the non-home rule exert, did the non, non-home rule, Gurnee, they have home rule powers, eight, they're one percent home rule, um, this will be to the occupation tax. And I don't know that they did, I think they did the grocery tax, because they're a lot better situated than us, but outsiders are paying a lot, pretty proportion of dollars. Um, so they went with that versus the grocery tax, similar to that, I mean, you, you probably eliminate the word Gurnee, put it in Antioch, and take out home rule, and put in non-home, I'd say that are.
One more question, and then, and then I'll, uh, or, next one. The deadlines for passing these, if I read the, the state law regarding it, it mentions, didn't have a drop dead date, but it said that if you wanted to start collecting, January first had to be by October. And then if, if you passed after, it was, it was June or early date.
Right, so it'd be, um, we could just say January one, so it'd be July one, and then it'd be passed on three months prior to that.
Is there a general expiry date that we have in two passing? Meaning if we didn't pass it now, and wanted to wait or, or something else on the non-home rule, or is there a date that that expires, that we have to pass it if we want to do that? Not at this time, it's just a matter of when they would start collecting, is when that would kick in.
Time number when you want it, so the reason that you're seeing so much of the news is so many municipalities don't want to lose, they don't want to go down to this zero grocery tax and then turn around and pass it, which comes out six months later, and everybody's confused.
Yeah, and they're losing, I get it, if you're not passing mine, we'll pass it anyway, so you can.
It's just, it's just a transition.
And then are you, are you familiar, are, are there any communities that are doing it tiered? In a fashion where like, if this year they're doing point two five, then in a year they're doing point five seven five, and then moving it up slowly, so it doesn't impact.
I've not heard that, I've heard and I, and I want to say, I listened to both states, and all my, my poor communities that were gonna pass the grocery tax or have another tax, they were communities that had no grocery, no grocery stores, basically, like, if not, you can just, we can just.
No, I get that grocery tax is a no winner, as far as I'm concerned, that's a, that's a simple one-to-one replacement, that makes a hundred percent sense. Raising the additional sales tax, I get it, and I understand our need for it, and I'm just trying to figure out the balance that makes sense to me personally. I know that, you know, we've talked about it a lot, we have a lot of needs. I get it. But we also have a lot of tax issues out here where people are very upset about taxes. I get that the sales tax spreads it out, I get that, I get, I get all the arguments, both sides. Everything I've read on it, for every good comment, there's a bad, every back, yeah, it, it's really hit or miss, and some people are calling it, is it, are you gonna go good government or good policy, you know, I don't know, where are these crossed? It's different for every community, so I understand it, and I think we need to, to, to figure it out. I, I, I just, I'm, I'm trying to get my hands around, what is the right number, and, and I get it, if we're gonna pass one, might as well do the full percent, because whether it's a half a percent or a percent, people are gonna be just as angry if they're angry. Um, so I get that part of it, but I'm just trying to put it all together in my head, and I, you've helped. And then those charts did help, actually, because like, that's where I was getting confused on what, because then for a while there, I was thinking we're adding as much as three percent, and I'm going, wait a minute, what's the people gonna be doing?
There will be exceptions, and what does apply, it is, it is. And we do, uh, Lori receives questions from businesses, and I told you, I can't imagine, there's some tax collecting tax information collecting, what, what, what's included in this, or this, or that, so, what's that? Why not pass this along to you, because there's things in here now.
I, I don't think a lot's happened, one more quick question, does this impact uh the dispensary revenues or any of the gambling revenues, does this get any of those items? As well, or is, are those limited to those?
No, they, they mentioned that um, anything where the Tetris, whatever, is included in the general merchandise tax, so seven percent number.
So those tax rates there wouldn't change or anything else, or, that we wouldn't be adding another one percent on, or?
Just for the, I think.
If you don't know, that's fine, I was curious.
I saw the, the solver mentioned uh specifically, I think, I don't know the word, Tetra, do, do you know that word?
Six T X C.
I, I just think, in that case, he wasn't ex- was excluded from the, being the tax being eliminated, so if yourself, if Adam was lucky enough to sell it right now, he would currently be taxed on that tax.
Under the cannabis act, not under?
Under the, the governor's limitation, he, he did
And, no, the.
Alcohol.
And other stuff that qualifies for the cannabis.
Okay. All right, that's all good.
During your presentation, are you able to share that via email too, I think? I'm having trouble reading all of it, I'm making an upgrade on my glasses, so I'm just trying to, I didn't see in my package anymore.
Oh, did you?
No, it's not in our package, so if you're able to email it, that might be helpful, just to.
I thought you, I thought we were gonna give handouts, I'm so sorry.
No, that's okay, and it's my vision, but I couldn't quite read the numbers, but
Sorry, but.
No, but it's okay, I mean, in general, I mentioned at the library meeting that I would be favorable, I think it's a necessity, um, and like Trustee Basics, that I think raising funds this way is the least impactful for our residents, even though I know they're not gonna like it, I don't want to see additional taxes either, but it seems to be the best way to kind of spread it around, like you said, with the percentages of people that are shopping at the store, six zero 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 two. Uh, it's not all of our residents, and if the neighboring municipalities are gonna be passing these, most likely, unless they go over the border, it just sort of is one of them, so I think the time is right to do it. Um, but one of my questions, and this could be from my eyesight, just so that I could explain it to people if they talk to me or ask questions. I thought I read on there that if we didn't pass the grocery tax, we'd still have a point seven five, is that what I read? Would it be nothing, or?
No, if we do not pass the grocery tax, we will have one of the lowest tax rates in the area, we get point seven five.
Okay, why, why is that not zero? Oh, oh, because of the state county tax, okay, I got you. Oh, oh, no, I follow the.
The other portions, yeah, are in that number, I had to break down.
No, it's the point five to the county and the RTA are point two five, that, that's where you found it.
The county transportation's a quarter of a percent, and then the RTA is a.
Okay, okay, I got it, I got it, and then just as an example, if a, a resident were to ask us, so this kind of clarifies what Trustee Booth was saying, they go to the Jewel just for groceries, and they spend three hundred dollars, this is like a three dollar, there's not gonna be six dollars, because the two different taxes are separate products, right? One is not grocery items, so one's not grocery, so they're gonna see three dollars in my example, not six, from my family.
I can't be the man on this.
You're right, you're correct, it's three, it's three dollars.
Okay, oh, actually.
Yeah, it's three dollars, it's three dollars, you're paying three bucks to the.
It's not one and one.
Four seven five, three dollars.
Yeah, cur- currently, so, yeah.
Right, but if we be acceptable, okay, those are my only questions, thank you, and if you could email each other, that'd be great, too. No, that's okay.
It's in your email.
Trustee Martinez?
Uh, exactly what, uh, like I hit on was, I was actually looking to say, uh, we're gonna need those, that slideshow, we're gonna need the packet, because we are gonna be the ones that are becoming up to, uh, have the neighbors approach us, and, uh, they were very informative, so it's, uh, it's something that I we were having in our back pocket, or like, I should, it's gonna be in our, in our phone and our email, because, um, we have to, uh, move forward with something, right, and right now, it's just that, you know what, if we follow through with all this surrounding such communities, as they go through with it, I go, there won't be less scrutiny, I go, because it's just the same, it's like, you know what, everyone's supposed to, it's just the same. And obviously, we haven't, we haven't needed this source impactful for our residents, and because of that, I, I feel that this is somewhere I have to push forward, but yeah, I don't know, definitely spend time with that, I appreciate it.
Yeah, it's just a little different again, because of our makeup, and, and when you look at that Placer, uh, software and how it shows how much is, is coming from the outside of your state. You, you have to take a business tax, and they're not, no, nobody's really looking at their tax book at that time. I, I know, I, I wasn't looking at it, they passed the one percent, not a single word, I don't worry. The, 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 what happens?
Trustee Pierce?
Well, I guess I hate to give the negativity here, but here I go. Uh, first of all, I do appreciate you pointing out the fact that the property tax with, um, a one point six million dollars is leading because it, it, uh,
Right.
and there's no way we'd ever, you know, put a one point six million in over one year, it'd be over probably very, very many years.
Right, so, so often people try to equate it to a cup of coffee, this is more than a cup of coffee now. Right, so, so often people try to equate it to a cup of coffee, this is more than a cup of coffee now, you have to give up a cup of coffee a day or something, solve it.
But, but, but I look at this, these proposals, and. Right now, we've got a new gas tax coming July first, which is gonna drive business away further. We've got, Oakland Noll's was here tonight wanting us to help them put a SSA in place on the houses over Oakland Noll's. I don't know how much that would be, uh, we've got Clublands in New Haven, uh, burying the brunt of the SSA mistake that was made because the courts imposed that. I was back in the, the early two thousands, I was here for that debacle, um. We've got an automatic water increase that occurs every year because we didn't want to vote on it, we just wanted it automatically occur. Uh, we've got all these costs that are coming in place. And we want to add to it because. We can't, um, and that we, 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 we.
You're not doing it because you can't, you're doing it because you have a need, a nine point three million dollar.
I have needs at home too, uh, um, and, and I can't just say I'm, I'm gonna get more money as, because I have needs at home. I, you know, I have to drive as, uh, I have to go buy a used truck, I can't buy a brand new truck, there's, there's things that I have to address my needs with at home. Um, and if we put these taxes in place, we just get to go ahead and fulfill every need that we have. And, and it just moves forward, I know we have lots of needs and we aren't addressing a lot of the needs that we should be addressing. But to me, right now, if you talk to the, I mean. Somebody, I think said you had to make a hundred and forty-five thousand dollars a year before the property taxes in Antioch. How many people, how many people in Antioch make a hundred and forty-five thousand, we're, we're. We're a middle income, a mid, you know. Income family town, there's a lot of, a lot of middle class here, hands, a, a range buffer class, and we also have a lot of lower class. The grocery tax aggressively hits the lower tax people more because they can afford it the least.
Therefore.
Um, so, right now, a whole lot of the people that are in here are hurt, and, and we're just going, well, we have these needs in the village. Everybody else is passing these taxes, so we're gonna pass, pass them too right now. Um, you know, and you, you mentioned, well, if we, if we pass the, the grocery, the, I'm sorry, the non-home rule. Retail service tax, which I think is the, no, the occupation tax, which is the grocery tax. I think, or that, vice versa, they put some funky name on, just saying grocery tax, sales tax.
There's two separate.
I know they're two separate ones, they put, they put funky names on them so that you, that, that people like me would get confused.
Yeah, the municipal retail tax, yeah, is the slo- shortest version, I probably heard somebody say, but I don't want to confuse them.
But, but one of your selling points was, if we approve that grocery tax. We'll have one, we'll still have one of the lowest grocery taxes in, in the, in the area, so we can use that as a selling point. Well, we got one point seven five, it's even lower, we could use that as a selling, a selling point.
Everybody else is probably getting sitting, the majority are gonna be sitting on one seven five, it would actually be a point seven five, by not passing the. If you choose to pass it.
No, right now, you, right now, your current thing says we're at one point seven five, if my bifocals that are squinting two eyeballs as tight as I can. Can, uh, possibly make out over there.
That currently one point seven five.
Yeah, it's currently one point seven five, so if we don't add to it, we're gonna be at one point seven five.
It's gone, the governor's taking it away.
That's to see, he's, he's not showing it as a proposal, he's, he's, he's not showing the grocery tax in there. But we, we actually wanted a grocery tax, not that one percent.
So wait, so we understand correctly, he didn't just take away the one, one, the one percent that, that he wants us to add to the grocery tax.
No, he took it away and you're not putting it back on.
And, and he, he took all, he took away the Lake County Transportation point two five percent, uh.
No, those.
Transportation Authority, the point two five.
They're, they're probably gonna pass it back, I should say, I've not paid attention to what other entities are doing, I mean, just. Seven thousand and oh, maybe.
We, we can quibble over, we can quibble over the percentages once, once in place, not. If we don't pass it, what I'm saying is, we're gonna have the lowest. Prop, grocery tax, cause everybody else you say does pass it because they, they can. Um, so, so, that, that to me. Isn't really a selling point because. Because. We're, if we're shooting to advertise we got the lowest, we don't increase, we don't increase tax when we have the lowest.
Um, that's a true statement, the lowest, you will have the lowest grocery tax. So if people are buying food, and you're saying everybody's gonna follow the tax. That means a lot of people are coming to Antioch just to buy groceries now, because you have point seven five, then you'll be at point seven five, unless you choose to pass a grocery.
According to the Pleasers, about eight percent of the people in the country are coming to Antioch to, to buy groceries here.
Right.
Um, and only twenty percent of the, I think that Pleaser software is very misleading. Because I, I can almost guarantee you a hundred percent of our residents are shopping at Walmart, Aldi's, and Ju- Jewel for groceries.
And so your positive point to them is, you've reduced their grocery tax bill. Because at this point, it's just saying it, it's gonna go away.
Okay, that'd be positive, it went away, but what I'm saying is, the, the, the Pleaser information is misleading, cause a hundred percent of our Antioch people are shopping in those stores. But, the overall. Number of people shopping there is outsiders is larger. But we're, a hundred percent of our people are gonna be impacted by those taxes instead of making it sound like only twenty percent of them are. It's a hundred percent of them are gonna be impacted by the taxes we put on there.
Yeah, I can, I'm still useful, but there's still four times the number. Coming in, whatever you know, I, I can't, I had to use a number, yeah, right? I had to use a number to give you estimates, that's, that's the best I could do here. Pretty good software, isn't it?
My point is, I don't care about people coming in, you know, if we can find a way to discharge, then I'd be happy with that, but we can't, I care about people in Antioch, the ones that are hurt. Right now, we've got a lot of people hurt, we've got a lot of people who are very lucky, they can afford whatever we do to them. Um, I just, I don't agree with this, and, and the state, that the governor, governor didn't do this to us.
He didn't.
Come on.
You have a nine point three million problem, he didn't do that to you, he did not do that to you, so I don't think it's a fair comment.
He put the knife in our hands, stabbed our taxpayers in the wall. That's my opinion.
Okay.
Alright.
Is it my turn? Thank you. I agree with this, I think we should pass this. We have a responsibility, sitting up here on this board, to take care of our infrastructure. I don't want to have to explain to my neighbors that I did nothing. I, you know, I didn't remember that water main break on our street. No, I know that, that, and we had a mild winter, but we had a lot of water main breaks all over this town. I was paying attention, Dennis, and they were all out working there. We have a responsibility to fix this. And we have a plan to fix it. And we talked about it at this meeting. And we can't just say, well, we just can't afford it, you know, we're just not gonna pass this tax. We have a responsibility, I understand property taxes are high, we're not the only taxing body that's passing all these taxes on our homeowners. We're not the only ones, but we do have a responsibility to fix those storm sewers. And to fix the other infrastructure, we have sidewalks and streets and you name it. The things that aren't real pretty when you're driving down the street noticing. But, we have to have the courage to do it. And we can explain this to our constituents if we read this. And I agree with. My colleagues here sitting up there saying, you know, I'm glad we're getting that email to us, we can study it and. Have it available in our mind when someone's asking about this. But we have a responsibility to do this. I don't want to, I don't want to have to explain why we didn't fix the storm sewers. How old is a storm sewer on Main Street, a hundred years old? Uh, seriously, we have to do this.
Yeah, I think the nine point three million dollar projects, those are needed. To my knowledge, Dennis, like we were sitting down, working on, hey, this would be a nice luxury, I mean, we, we didn't even work on this like that, you're just basic needs.
So box for me for a second, okay, so, one of the reasons I ever decided to run for this position, and I think what we hear most as elected officials is. Uh, people can't afford their property taxes first and foremost, which is the one tax that goes one hundred percent on the residents. Um. And water bills and other things that we tax onto the residents, so, um, you know, I see this as an opportunity to. You know, potentially, if we're ever gonna find a way to reduce property taxes for people, this might be one of those ways if we can. Uh, collect enough money from sales tax and have the people from Salem and Lake Villa and other communities, uh, contribute to that. That bottom dollar, um, of what we're gonna need in the future, and, uh. I think that, you know, when we look at different revenue sources for the village in the future, and everything is getting more expensive for everybody, obviously, including us. Uh, if we're going to succeed for the future of Antioch fifty years, twenty, fifty, hundred years down the road. You know, things like the marketplace coming in and potentially even doubling what that sales tax amount is. Is where we're eventually gonna be able to give property tax relief to the homeowners, because. I mean, that's the one thing you're gonna hear me talking about the next four years or however long, is getting these property taxes down. How can we get other revenue sources to reduce the property taxes? Uh, they're not gonna like it, but talking about other government bodies, including ours and school districts and so on and so forth about. Consolidating governments and not having so many different, uh, taxing bodies, which, you know, you know, we have five or five school districts. Two local governments and, you know, go on down the road and every one of those is, is, is a, a line item on the tax bill, so. Uh, if this is something that we can see and forecast to really help our residents. Even if it's a hundred dollars less off their tax bill or fifty dollars, everything I could take off their property tax bill. Definitely be interested looking at, so, again, we're not given this opportunity very often by the states to, uh. Do something like this, so we just gotta look at, you know, again, some of these maintenance items we talked about last week have not happened for. Twenty, thirty years because the money wasn't there to do them, so, you know, when the sewer systems or the wells need to be done, or. Some of these big items, we're gonna have to, our parking lots need to be fixed, uh, we're gonna have to figure out how to pay for those, and. I would prefer this over raising property taxes any day of the week, so, that's, that's all I'll say on, on that.
Well, one thing I'll say is, look at a bottle of ketchup when you go around. Bottle of ketchup, Jewel, six dollars, flyers, in Illinois, three dollars. So some of these stores, Jewel, famous for, for price gouging, Walmart's a different price, pay two dollars, a bottle of ketchup, just simple stuff. Companies take advantage of when, if we get this tax. They're gonna have, they're, they're gonna have to make, uh, two cents left, less on a bottle of ketchup. Pay for the tax, otherwise the consumer's gonna go to Wisconsin. Simple as that, they're gonna have to keep the consumers, they're not gonna be able to gouge as much on a bottle of ketchup. They're gonna have to come into reason for those scores. Comments over here, trustee Luther?
Everyone's making very valid points, but I think. When we talk about these taxes, it's not gonna reduce property tax. So that, I don't think that's the argument to go to our voters or the residents with, because. Every year I've been on this board, we've asked for the maximum we can get every year from, from property tax revenue, and with all of our needs, I don't see us changing that, so unless. When we pass this, maybe we could put something in effect that we're not gonna, we're gonna reduce our, our, our. Annual, uh, property tax request by an equal amount that we collect by this would be the only way that you would reduce or keep your property taxes the same. Because if we keep doing this, well, yes, we, we have the needs, and I agree, and it's something I think we need to do. But I don't want to sell it to the residents as this is property tax relief, because we have so many needs like everyone's talking about, and the sky's about to fall. So we've gotta raise this money to do these things. That, it, we're not gonna be able to do property tax relief for quite a while, if at all down the road, if, if, if we do this now. I also think the, the, the tax on our businesses, even though it's a sales tax on the, the goods outside of the groceries. We have a lot of hurting businesses in, in town here, so. They've all been asking for years since I've been on this board and everything else for us to do more to help. Advertise or do things, so maybe we could look at if we pass this and taking some of these dollars to help promote. Businesses in town to help them get sales, to do things that offset this. I love the idea of saying we don't have a grocery tax in Antioch. Now that I think about it more and after hearing everything here, because that would be something that someone could advertise at. Jewel or Walmart or wherever, that we don't have a grocery tax in Antioch, or.
No municipal.
No municipal, well, exactly, but.
You don't wanna say no.
No, but I mean, and, and one percent is a lot when you're spending, you know, probably three or four hundred bucks a week. Uh, even in my family, two, I'm spending that much, so that, I mean, that's a lot more than forty seven bucks a year, I'll tell you that. And, and, and additional grocery tax or, or, or everything else, but. So I, I get it, I agree, we need to do something, I'm still not sold on what we should do. But I think if we're, if we're leaning towards passing both, which would be, and we have to talk about that, we have two separate items, we have the grocery tax and this other one percent sales tax. So when we're talking about this, we have to talk about are you in favor of passing both, one, neither, or a percentage on, on one or the other? Because, uh, personally, after hearing everything today, I'm kinda, originally I was thinking, let's do the grocery tax and, and not the sales tax to replace those funds that we're gonna lose. Now I'm thinking more in the line of passing the sales tax but not the grocery tax. Because what trustee Pierce said is, is that, uh, the people that that's gonna impact the most, that need to eat is everybody, and that's the lower income residents of Antioch. By giving them a, what that grocery tax and not charging for that, that's putting food on their plates of their families and them. Money that they can spend on groceries and so forth. Um, so I'm leaning more towards that combination of doing the sales tax and not the grocery tax. Uh, I'd like to see us use that as funds for this maintenance, but maybe put some of that money towards, I know we don't like to, 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 you know. Lock down funds for certain things, we, we, we discussed it before. And it's not something the board's been wanting to do, but maybe we need to do that in this case, if we're gonna raise new revenue. We need to tell the residents of Antioch what we're doing with them, why we're doing it, and we have a very valid story with that, with everything that needs to be done. Um, you know, we had a great presentation last week showing all this work that needed to be done, now it's just public works, but we have parks, we have other things that need. Um, so, we can show that there's a need for this additional revenue, we can also show that we're, we're listening to the residents by not charging them the grocery tax, which will then be a direct savings to most. If not all the people that shop in town, and it will greatly impact those that have limited incomes. And it does give us some coverage of what our needs are, but we also have to start looking at that down the road, you know, a lot of those items and those. Those charts that we looked at last Friday or Thursday, or every time, my days are confused. Um, are really maintenance items and things that should be in our annual budget, and a lot of them were in our budget already from this past year. Um, and I'm sure they will be moving forward, some of them are straight out capital, things that we'll need to budget for. But I think we need to take a look at everything, and we've been spending a lot, we, but we had a lot of needs and a lot of, uh, things that had to be done. And we're, we're getting those done, but now we need to sit there and take a look and go, okay, moving forward. We've got a lot of needs, let's take care of the needs, then go to the wants, and then from there we can go on to the, would be nice to haves. So I think if we're gonna do this, we need to show some restraint on other things and, and work so that we're not just whacking all of them with, cause we can't. And that would be my only. Rebecca?
Uh, clarification, uh, from Michael Peterson, they were already paying the grocery tax, correct, so our, I know our lower income families, obviously we all. We know money is tight, we want to help, but this is something they had been paying, so it's not really a new, it's just us.
So other than those, with financial assistance, or, I mean, even though the names of the cards.
Yes, having all that.
Right, so, I don't know that they actually, you had numbered off, so I would wanna say like everybody who's. On the lower income has a savings coming or something, I, I have nothing better.
But we've been paying it, so I've been paying at the grocery store, so if the governor takes the lower income January, and we put it on, it's not like an increase really to consumer in Antioch, so. Just to kind of piggyback on what trustee Booth was saying, I don't know that it's. Anything more for them, for our residents, and I agree with trustee Peterson, when I look at the list that Dennis provided, we have so, so many needs, I think about the repair that was done on my street, how expensive it was with the sewer that they were. I don't even know, there were breaks in the lines, and there's just so much old infrastructure and projects to do. I don't even know, there were breaks in the lines and there's just so much old infrastructure and projects to do and. I I I agree that we have a responsibility to to think of our residents and their finances, but I think this is the best way just for a small impact to spread around. Versus like Trusty Peterson said, having to explain to our neighbors, I'm sorry that, you know, we didn't pass the extra, maybe two, three dollars you paid at the grocery store, but we can't afford to fix your sewer and you've got. You know, backups in your home or other other problems, so I think it's necessary to all personally, but what the other people chime in.
Trusty Martinez?
Uh Dr. Real quick, let's go back to your slideshow where it says sales tax recap and you give me Walmart, Menards and Jewel. What's the timeframe if we go over to Walmart, what was the timeframe on that? When we talk about this.
Two, one year, or one year prior.
This is, so this was a month's worth?
No, a year.
A a year's worth, a year's worth of data, so you're.
June, so that's May going backwards one year.
So the five largest communities that go to Walmart. Our Walmart here in Antioch uh is Antioch. Lake Villa, Round Lake, Traver, Wisconsin, Camp Lake, Wisconsin, correct? So instantly we're saying, again, with the sales tax, this this is being imposed. It won't affect, it will affect us, but the bulk of this money will be coming from outside. And with that in mind, again, if it wasn't for the fact that we have needs and we have agents that we need to keep up with. I'm I'm still inclined to say it's supported.
This question's for Dennis. Just the water main on Main Street alone, how much would that cost to replace it from state and district, to bring it up to bay standards?
Well, um typically, what my understanding is, it's a million dollars. Uh to replace one, it's gonna be different for a scenario like Main Street because. If the water main is underneath the pavement, the entire. Uh water main from North Avenue to what's. Versus open doors where it's outside, so there's minimal impact uh to the pavement section, so so. Can't give you an exact number, but I'm I'm being told a million dollars for a.
If I remember correctly, the discussions for the for Lake Michigan water to bring all of water mains and all the pipes in Antioch up this uh. Wasn't it in the thirty to forty million dollar range on top of bringing the water to us?
I believe it was a seventy million dollar number that was back. Twelve, maybe?
Seventy million?
Yes. So probably consider a double now.
So if we wanted to bring all our water mains up this uh, they're they're over seventy million.
No, that was to get Lake Michigan.
Well, there was there was to get Lake Michigan water here, but then we were told they would also have to then, then. Replace all our mains basically because you pump the Lake Michigan water into the top of the main.
There would be system upgrades, I don't know, all of the water main would be be replaced, but there would be required uh upgrades to our system.
How much money are we estimating to get from this a year?
Eight million.
Eight million total or eight billion a year?
Eight million total, it's one point six million a year and this, these are, these are general fund dollars now wired in sewer, which you're correct.
I understand that, I'm just trying to make it cost, everybody said you want to make money to do the water and sewer.
No, I know, there's nine point three million in cap of projects that are listed in my forecast. That I had shared and I can reshare with everybody, that you'd be able to see, where are you coming up?
So so, yeah, would I would I would I be mistaken then, if we were to take care of all these capital game needs, the capital needs that we have? Parks, the the all the infrastructure that needs repaired, whether it's parks, uh the water systems, uh. Buildings, whatever, would it be safe to say that eight million dollars is estimated generate would not cover that? You'd have to probably use this as a guarantee for a loan that would then be charged interest on, just like we had to get a bond to cover. Cover the park and the public works and and stuff.
And so, um as I recall, what I did was, uh I had removed public works from the totals. Um so there's like, if you look at um twenty twenty seven, there's another five million of of public works that you might borrow. Has the bond issue, but I believe there's like one one point five shortfall maybe from the bonds. That's not my chief.
Yeah, I'm.
Yeah, so so I didn't try to, I didn't have the time to sit and get.
Right, what I'm trying, what I'm trying to say is if we collect these taxes, we're, if we wanna do the stuff we say we wanna do. We can't just use this money and do that, we're gonna have to generate another bond like we did for other things, guaranteeing the same public gets to. That's been my experience over the last twenty, thirty years.
The general fund, um I don't wanna, I don't wanna say it this way, but the general fund has a profit just from. The revenues versus expenses and it's a planned profit that the that excess moves into the capital projects. Think of it this way, the general fund, all the projects were in a general fund itself, and we said, you know what, I don't like them buried within all these departments. Can we please move them to create their its own fund, but it's still general fund, so you took all the expenses out, moved them over here. And now this looks like there's a problem, there is a problem, but that profit is to be transferred to cover for this. But this has now gotten, become greater than what the number was, to the point of you need something. To be able to cover these costs, so.
I'm just saying, I'm just saying that something we need isn't gonna cover unless we do something else. And to go back to what the mayor said, oh, we can reduce property taxes, I've heard that, I'm sorry, I've heard that. Every year where it's like, oh, we're gonna, we're gonna do this, we're gonna do that, and we'll we'll cut the property taxes and every year, as Trusty Luther says, it's. We gotta do the five percent or else the state's not gonna give us the the actual amount we need next year, we won't request the five percent this year, then next year. They won't let us, we won't be requesting five percent less because we're we're behind the eight ball now, we never, we never go back and say. Reduce the amount of property taxes, I'm very interested in, and if we have, if we're increasing sales taxes and stuff. Reducing our request for property taxes and saying, hey, we need ten percent less on that five percent this year.
You're wanting to reduce the tax rate or the levy dollar amount, which.
I mean, I I don't know the, I don't know the specific right now, but there'd be, there'd be a, you know, if if we're. If we're saying we're gonna increase these taxes so we can lower property taxes, which I'm saying never happens, and if we are saying that. Then we'd have to have some sort of mechanism to make that happen every year.
Just a brief response to that, you know, as I, and that's why I think like this marketplace property is so critical. Cause these numbers are based off uh current conditions, if I understand, but you had a TJ Maxx or. A Target or something, that too becomes four or five, um and the other part about this, again. Can't made wave a magic wand, there's bigger problems starting with pensions and state things and other taxing districts, but. We have had them recently in the room um at the request of uh Lee Perry as well, being like, hey, we all gotta get together and say. Either freeze these rates or do something with these rates, cause if you look at the projections, every one of us says five percent every year, five percent a year. Tax supposedly be twenty thousand dollars, twenty eight, in in no, in no time, so, yeah, that, we have to do something for that regard, I. I agree, I think as a board, we could be the leaders of that in this town and be like, hey, we're gonna cap the tax rate at no more than three percent. Increases for the next five years and see if the other taxing bodies will join, join up with us on something like that.
Never will, that that will, everybody there is some concept, and I I will, I will agree with like the marketplace. Because Mike Haley uh married a program when I was first elected, he said, Scott, you gotta understand one thing. Be a successful community, you got three legs on your stool, I'm like, three legs on the stool is what you've got, industry, you gotta bring in industry. You gotta bring in residential, you gotta bring in commercial, that way if one of those legs gets broken, you still got two other legs, wouldn't that stool up possible? So we need commercial, we need industrial, we need residential to be financially successful. I don't know if we we can ever satisfy the beast of of what we need if we're just raising tax.
Well, I I will say that whoever was on this board when the Walmart Menards came along and that debate happens. I mean, if those projects were never approved, a lot of the stuff we see downtown would never have happened, it would never have happened without Walmart.
We were just in thank, and thank God Mary and I fought for this, and that was the true castle bottomless, we were in thank.
Absolutely.
We were ahead of the perfect.
And that's why it's a, to me, the biggest, the most critical thing that we have to be able to do in the next. Two to four years is make sure that marketplace project happens and it happens directly and profitably.
It's already been fifty past the.
Fifty, oh, it's good.
Fifty's go far.
Yeah, all they're all coming, they're all believing, I go to a mayor's lunch and all those mayors from around Lake County are watching our meeting right now, so they're. They're they're taking their cues, believe me, I already texted a bunch of them today locally and they're all probably watching, so um. Trusty Peterson, yeah?
I don't have anything else to say, I I think I said everything that I.
All right, well, I think we all need to study up, and I think this is gonna be on the July ninth meeting, um I would hope at that point we're, you know, getting close to um. You know, potentially putting some uh packages together of uh different alternates, you know, uh alternate A, you know, everything, alternate B, none of it. And get to a point where we can start making some decisions on this, so and again, that the staff can plan. Projects and budgeting as well based on what uh that's gonna come in, so good discussion, I'm glad we're having it, we are, we are. Leaders locally, and I'm talking about this early, so that's good, Trusty?
Yeah, I just wanted to, these discussions are the valuable ones, this might be the most valuable discussion we've had on this board in four years. Because this impacts everybody and everyone's opinion is correct, it's just you can differ on the solution to it. And and the thing is, unless we talk about it openly, we can, this is when this stuff has to be known, and if the residents care about this issue. Have the opportunity to reach out to them, like we said tonight, and you know, and so this is, this is a good thing. It's a bad thing that we need to have all these needs, but we're trying to fix it, we can't fix it overnight, I get it. Um and I agree with Trusty Pierce that I, you know, concern of mine would be that if we are. Doing this to get that revenue flow and then just using that to do another bond issue to to do something else. That's something I, if that's being discussed behind scenes, I'd like us to talk about that now, um but if if this is strictly what it is. I'd also ask that if if our attorneys can get us the um drafts of the, I guess it would be, would it be one ordinance or two? Would it be a grocery tax ordinance and a sales tax ordinance?
Yeah, two.
Could we get those, or drafts of those as soon as possible, not just in our package or the next, you know, or whatever, I I'd like to be able to look at that and and take a look at both of those. As soon as we could.
Yep, we will have this uh July ninth, the the next time we'll talk about this and hopefully some uh. Information and and questions, I said if uh if uh attorney facilitates it, make certain like some time for trustees to leave with them and. Michael, then I'll make sure that they carve some of that out, um all right. Item number four is continued discussion regarding ordinance, many sections four dash two B dash six. And four dash one, four dash four of the Antioch village code regarding licensed selling products, products containing THC. Um I know we have Chief Kachow, Minister Kachow up here to go over this and I'm just gonna. Go out and say how I feel about this now um in advance and um, you know, I've thought about this a lot, I know we did a lot to protect kids and. And do uh put those ordinances in place and uh, like I said, I don't wanna hurt local businesses. I also wanna be realistic in the uh in the in the national's um scope of what's going on. And, you know, I am of the opinion, I'm only one opinion, that if we were gonna do this, this should be something that uh if we legally can. Should be tied to a liquor license or maybe a special class of liquor license so that, you know, only the people that have that license can sell these products. So every mom and pop store isn't trying to sell it, you know, if Antioch uh liquors or uh. Or Walmart or Jewel or somebody wants to sell it, they'd have to get a different type of license, whether there's a different fee structure for that, I don't know, but. To me, that's the safest way to do something like that if it's legal, I think being a quote unquote an intoxicating product to probably. Figure out some way to tie that to our liquor license, but as the world changes, I guess so do we, so we have to figure out um. How to do that, so Jeff, I'll leave the floor to you.
Sure, so very briefly, um just to kinda recap how we get to where it, I know the board has had numerous discussions uh related to the. THC infused beverages and I got got the sense that the board was conflicted on whether or not we continue with the outright prohibition. Or whether or not we try to find a way to make this mass-produced product that's first on the market available to sale uh within some of the retail shops, so. We're working with our legal team, uh we presented a one version of a draft ordinance. That would remain an outright prohibition of kratom and the uh non-beverage forms of the Delta eight, Delta nine THC. Lessons within the confines of a of a uh dispensary, so that would still prohibit some of the. Concerns that the the board had with some of the the plant materials, other type edibles that maybe offered for sale in other communities that we prohibited. But allow these mass-produced uh THC infused beverages to be sold uh within the businesses that currently hold. Liquor licenses, um conceivably right now could be sold in any business, um it puts an onus on the business owner. Is a condition of license to only sell that individuals age twenty one and over, so that would mean if. Somebody came into Mr. Kasha's liquor store, they wanted to buy these products, the onus is on him under the the draft ordinance. To check ID, just like we would for any other prop, any other uh intoxicated compound and verify that they are age twenty one or above. As the mayor mentioned, um as we seek to try to bring, uh whether or not you wanna call it kind of consistency or. Perhaps uh e- equity across how this product would be regulated in some of these businesses that do not currently have liquor licenses that could just freely sell. Uh we are exploring the legal, the uh concept of creating a new class of license that a business would have to have in order to sell these things, so. Uh I guess fair mention, you know, if the downtown retailer, pet food seller, so pet food decided to sell this product currently under gas regulation, they could. Uh but in order to bring score consistency and better controls, we're exploring the option of perhaps adding a a class of license to allow them to sell them. So any unlicensed retailer would not be able to sell it under ordinance, that would help the police department regulate it better by knowing who's selling it. Uh in a relative compliance checks, but again, for our responsible businesses, I don't see that this would be a problem.
And and probably including, you know, I know there's um bars and restaurants that serve this now, they would probably have to, you know, get a separate license, you know, I know. I think, I know one that advertised that they do, but you may see every restaurant in town something, and if that's the way the world is going, so.
If this seems, Mr. Kasha said on diverse occasions, this this uh this type of product seems to be gaining momentum within the retail market. And trying to implement your diligence, research it, you know, he's actually right that you see some of that, that he's advertising or. Uh you see some of the mass producers of other uh liquors, beers enter into this product, and certainly just. To growing emerging trend at some point, we're gonna have to do something about, and I think, um you know, as much as it's painful as it may be to roll back the ordinance a little bit. Something that we developed and we were very proud of, I think, kinda changing with the times, this thing's first. Flexible and I think this is kind of a logical step for that.
All right, uh discussion, I'll start here and then I'll come over here.
You know, it's, the license idea, and there's just kind of insurance, great idea. But you gotta protect people from the people that aren't gonna follow the rules. Anna may follow, he he may follow the rules, but others won't. And then you wanna make sure if you got a store. Who's called a donut shop that's gonna sell this with their donuts. That they're properly have liability insurance for what they're doing, so if someone does get hurt by their actions. Parents can go after, because this product is not normal insurance on the tram shop. He's unique at his his tram shop, particularly restaurants and other places, they would have to get a special. Uh insurance policy, which we would shouldn't require that certificate to be on file that it's specifically covered. For that specific Delta nine product or whatever, to protect the from the masses. Because you if you have people that are gonna start to change it to a pest store, selling it with dogs to the to an eighteen year old. Wanna make sure it's protected to an age limit.
And I and I think, Trusty, that would be a logical step, similar to, do our liquor license movement, demonstrate evidence of proper coverage. We established the creation of Disney Best License, I think, which makes sense to have that same type of requirement. We established the creation of Disney best license, I think, which just makes sense to have that same type of requirement. For eligibility license to show you're properly insured to sell, something like this would make sense.
Thank you, trustee Luther. Let's, I'm I'm all about simplifying tonight, so let me just simplify. Is this ordinance ready to be voted on that could then allow for the. Twenty-one over, or do we have to wait for legal to get back to you about the licensing issues? Or is that a separate issue versus this?
So attorney Vesely and his team is currently doing the research on uh, the licensing portion of this. And it could be uh, incorporated if it determines that it is appropriate principle of the board could be incorporated into the draft. For vote at the next meeting. Clearly, there would be some time necessary for us to get kind of the procedures behind the scenes to work, so there could be. Delayed implementation date of that would probably need several months, but at least we could start with that first phase of requiring people to be twenty-one to sell it in the current. Environment that it is. We've noticed all businesses that this license is coming in, if they're just going to sell it, they're gonna have to apply the license. Allows the infrastructure in place to do it.
So if we we if we put this ordinance as submitted here. On an an agenda at the next meeting, we can vote to allow that. Twenty, I mean, what it what it states, about twenty-one and over and so on and so forth. And does that kick in immediately? I mean, would they be able to start selling this as soon as we pass that? And then that licensing portion can be figured out as we move forward, or do we need to. Wait for it all to go together, which could delay this another six months?
I would defer to legal on what the implementation period is, if there is a delayed implementation, if we pass it as is, it goes back day one or is day thirty, that I can't answer. Um, but if if we're gonna go down the the licensing requirement step, we need time to develop processes behind the scenes, give the requirements, the applications, all those types. But we can move towards that if the board wants to, as is.
Alright, I I understand, that makes sense. I I just, my personal opinion is I think we need to move forward as soon as possible to get this. Ordinance as as submitted in place so that the twenty-one and over kicks in. And then the licensing, I agree with, I think it's a great idea, the insurance is a very good idea. I just don't wanna slow things, you know, stop these people from being able to sell it, if that's our intention. And then they have to wait another four or five, six months while we're doing that, so anything that we could do from, to get this done. So that these guys know they're in compliance and not gonna get, you know, violated and taken in, you know. That way, and then we can move forward on the rest, it would be my suggestion. Trustee, please.
Um, no, I like the idea of the licensing as well, because I am concerned about kids and safety and like trustee Mason said, we know that. Uh, our business owner here is gonna follow the rules, but not everybody. Uh, but based on the way it's drafted, uh, at least with the age requirement, hoping that we can also attach the licensing requirement. I feel comfortable um, in favor of it. My only question, and I just don't know enough about the product, since when I was doing researching, there was a lot of uh. Information about different milligrams and concentrations, is that anything that we can regulate or is it even needed? I don't know, because I've never purchased.
Three, it's three percent, point, under point zero, three percent, yes.
So there's, there's a maximum allowable percentage, I believe it's point three or point zero three that they're allowed, that's the exception. No regulation allows these products to even be sold in the state as is, so they can't exceed that percentage. But they're able to add more milligrams of that percentage, if that makes sense, that like other products have a. Five milligram or ten milligram kind of state bracket. How the science works behind it, I'm not exactly certain, I think they just add additional quantities of that percentage.
Maybe serving size is too, like some, you know, some cans might be this big and it's one serving size, some can could be, you know, a big can. And it could be, they were three servings, size within it. Um, you know, kind of like if you could bottle wine is, you like five servings. Yeah, so it's it it's usually, or by the way, just, I know this is unrelated, but mayor said something earlier, I want to let the touch away. But yeah, so there there's usually a, and they all have like. Like you get on on your cereal, how many calories, but there's usually something on it that says. I go over it, ten milligrams to service.
Just another article they write, it was like, you could pick up with a hundred milligrams, and I thought, oh my gosh, if I accidentally drink that, I'd be.
And they and they clearly label that in the manufacturing, origin, the. Um, percentages contained, all that sort of stuff, that's all required in the cannabis. Act as it is, so any retail product has to be sold, so all the, most of these fast made managers are all aware of that information.
Let me clarify something at the outset. First off, I think a a bottle of wine is two servings, depending on the size of the glass, right? But um, but on this um, on this note, I personally think that the um. That the code, uh, the liquor code or uh, our uh. Code would have to be amended at the same time this would go into place, to have that category. Or however that we could, you know, to make it effective, so I think we have to do both at the same time. So put that on the legal uh, team list to make sure we have that cat, you know, researched and categorized so that we can add it. Cause again, for me, I want somebody who's getting the right liquor license to be selling this versus somebody who's saying they have to be over twenty-one, cause. We have a lot more authority and control from that perspective than than otherwise. Trustee Martinez.
I'd uh, like to first start out with saying, I appreciate all the time and effort that was put into amend this ordinance or possibly amend this ordinance. I also like the reminded of what trustee Pierce said last time, that this is all on our shoulders. Because of failure down in Springfield. Again, for me personally, this is a product that I don't uh, personally approve of. But again, just because we have the ability to make an ordinance, that's something that we should follow through with, so. Again, appreciate all the time out there to amend it and.
Trustee Pierce.
Um, first of all, I I'd like to say, um. If we proceed forward or proceed forward, I think we received a lot of conflicting. Uh, opinion from our legal counsel on this, I hate to say that. Uh, so they were to say we could put a twenty-one limit on it, or we could make a different liquor license. As we request the board be issued a formal statement from his law firm that it is appropriate and legal. That way they are uh, accepting more responsibility of like what their legal opinion is. The the body of the board, probably because of the confusion over the last several years on this issue. Uh, I really hate to say that, but that's kind of my feeling on that. Um, it I I'm like. Trust me, Martinez, I don't approve this, I don't drink it, I don't follow it, I don't, I don't, I I I get it's big business, I watch what we're on in Texas. Where the governor decoded, um, for the state of Texas, um, so there's still play down there. I worked this week, I'm working up in Thor County, um, in fact, I gotta be back there at nine o'clock tomorrow morning. Um. It was surprising, my 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 wife joined me last night, we drove up to the like sister bay. And some of the stores had little signings, and I really liked the little signs. That they were selling these products, and I was like. Even work, can we? Uh, so it it is everywhere, I understand that, but. To me, it's critical that a liquor license requirement or an aid requirement and and be legal force to do that. It will be one of the critical things, and I will say maybe we need to look at our sign code, but we don't like the. The Beetlejuice approach to selling, selling products at this point.
I just may address the one comment, trustee. Relative to our ability to regulate the products, um, the attorney Vesely and I have had conversations along these lines. Along with his, his team who drafts these organs for us. Anytime you're embarking down a path where you're. Regulating things in ways that communities haven't historically done it, you're always have some level of exposure, right? We talked about this a lot first past this ordinance that, you know, we were, were we going beyond our home, not home powers, or we not? Um, there's always the ability for somebody to challenge it and mitigate that. Um, I think. It speaks to the um, level of detail that attorney Vesely and his team have done on the research presenting. Sound ordinances based on that research to us. In the fact that we've had this place for some time now, and not only have we not been challenged in reality of it, but. We've been the model for several other communities, not only in Penn Lake County, but throughout the state of Illinois. Also have able to run very similar ordinances and have not been challenged or, or the law has not been stricken down, so. Overall, I'm I'm relatively confident in the legal work that's being presented to us. So I just wanted to speak that I think they're doing a very thorough job of researching our abilities and making sure that we don't overstep, uh, Aaron, but Jimmy's offices. Uh, very conservative in the recommend basis that she got, that she was very transparent in this ordinance to tell me that. Yes, I believe that you can regulate these products in this manner, but. Full disclosure, somebody could challenge you and how is that gonna turn out in court, can't say, because it's never been done. So anytime you you have to find a move off. That hasn't been ruled on by the courts, there's always some level of exposure at risk.
And then I understand, I appreciate your defense of the law firm and their efforts, I understand there's a lot of effort and time into this. Um, and I'm sure the lawyers, they would find all ways, but all sorts of disparages and. And colesals and everything else that really, really, really small print that would be kind of thing, buying glasses at the bottom of the page. That they're covering themselves, but in this case, I think, uh, they should have some additional skin to gain, I think it's a fair request.
And then just to circle back, uh, Jimmy, um, currently, he told me it's ten days after her passage that we're gonna pull back.
Trustee Peterson.
Uh, I too, uh, agree with trustee Martinez, um, thank you for all the hard work. I know that, um, you've put a lot of time and effort into this trying to. Find a solution that's fair and fair for the residents, fair for all the businesses and people who live here. And I appreciate it. I really like this idea. I I like the idea of, um. An ordinance that, um, puts responsibility on the, uh, on the businesses and. Lets them, um, compete, and I I'm thrilled that we could do this, so I'm in full favor of this.
Alright, so, um, we will bring this item back, uh, also potentially July ninth. Based on some pending research with the liquor license. Alright, thank you. Um, next is discussion regarding ordinance submitting sections two point three. Dash two and two dash three, page dash three of the Aniac Lit Code. Regarding the number of parks and recreation advisory board members of the Philadelphia, Illinois, um, this is something I proposed. Just because we've had a lot of turnover and hard time filling these positions, um, also these are paid positions, so. It was, um, you know, actually a hundred and sixty dollars a meeting, it's actually a hundred and sixty dollars, so I was looking for the board's. Uh, feedback if we reduce the park board from seven members to five, if there was support for that. Any feedback?
Meetings are canceled.
About fifty percent or less?
So far, in my forelungs, um, at least.
Fifty percent.
Fifty percent? Is it canceled because of no forum?
Right. Um, last week's meeting was canceled because there was no forum, the meeting prior to that was canceled because I had. Engagements to train our staff. I couldn't make it.
Okay, I don't know, again, I didn't listen here when those numbers were passed. Sometimes ordinance will say no less than three or no more than seven to give some flexibility on that. Um, but I'm just. Trustee Luther.
Um, I have no problem reducing it, my only question, if there happen so many meetings canceled. Do we have, and I and I can't, didn't have a chance to look up, do we have a. Mandatory or a minimum number of meetings that a board member must attend before they're replaced? If we have board members that are not showing up to meetings, that's not helping.
Yeah, so I agree.
And that's something we need to deal with at the same time, but I have no.
Yeah, and I'm not, you know, again, if we decide this tonight or not, you know, that, I just wanna bring it up there to whatever we could do to make the attendance better. Potentially save money, um, are these meetings being, um, attended and are they, uh? Are we getting results, the result, intended results from the parks board meetings currently? Again, I don't know if that's a numbers thing or a forum thing or a, or an attendance requirement thing, but yeah, we gotta probably fix something on this.
Do you, um, do you have a thought on that? Is it a, are we having an attendance issue with the numbers or?
Um. Not, not so much. Uh, there was two, um, two, uh. People on the commission that just recently resigned, um, because they were having problems with attendance, uh, and another person moved out of. Aniac, so that's why they resigned. Um, so generally, I haven't seen problems with attendance except for last week's meeting. Um. So I, but it's only been four months that I'm aware of. I don't have a longer, a longer history of it.
No requirement, okay, so with right now, there's no like minimum requirement that we see, so we can also bring that up at a other. Meeting, but this is, you know, more to get feedback, if there's a strong feeling either way on this.
How does the chairman of the park board feel about this?
We should talk to Jim.
We were going to discuss it last week, oh, to see how people were feeling about it, um, he had a, uh, step in our family.
This is the most urgent thing on our plate, I just wanted to start the discussion and see where it's gonna go, just so, uh. Why don't we look at some attendance requirements to talk to Jim while we're in the comeback with it.
Thank you.
Alright, thank you. Um. Trustee Peterson, I'm sorry. Sorry, sorry, I figured this is, I figured, I figured this one wasn't really going too far tonight, but yeah, go ahead.
Um, I have no problem with going down to five. Um, I do, now Katie's here, we're gonna ask her, um, over the course of the next year. And kind of review the. Deficiency and the effectiveness of of the park board. I have heard in the past, sometimes people appreciate wanted or needed, and if they're gonna have them. How do we make them feel, actually, if they don't want it and need it? And if we aren't, and we don't need them, then maybe we can do that situation also in the future. Um, I would also ask that, we we had in our, if we can, if we can share the different work somehow. We can kind of see if we can win that, and we will prepare the data of the park board to provision to pay attention to that.
Sure, that's great, and my intention completely to do is, I'm I'm still working to figure out. Um, how the park board fits into the overall scope of the department and. Um, what their feedback had been historically taken into account, how how it's all working together, so I'm. On the same page as you and working to, uh, figure that out together with the current members. Sure.
Thank you. Um, last item on the committee, the whole meeting is discussion renaming the Aniac Senior Center. To the Dolly Sperring Community Center, we discussed this a couple of months back. Um, there's been a request, um. Also supported by the some members, or at least, uh, the chair of the, um, historical society and, um. Just, I think, everybody is can maybe still confused by the Aniac Senior Center, so renaming this, I think everybody here. Knows or should know, uh, the amount of gratitude Dolly Sperring had to the. Senior services in that building and PMNL and a bunch of other, um, charitable organizations, so. Is there any discussion to be had about this? I believe this is up for potentially a vote on the next meeting, um, tonight, so trustee Luther.
Um. My discussion or my point is more about our renaming or naming facilities in town. Um. I just wanna make sure that we are are protecting ourselves and our ability to do things. With those facilities down the road, if we do name them after a person or a family or something like that. Um, obviously with the, the Veterans Memorial, we've had some issues with the Brooke family. Um, I I don't know the Sperring family, I do, I what I've been told is that there's, there's no one left around here, but. I know that she was very, very, very generous to our community, so this has nothing to do with her or or naming this center after her. But my concern is, is down the road, if we go to change it, are we going to have issues coming at us because. You know, we named it the Dolly Sperring Center and we put up, we wanna use it for something else down the road, do it does, you know what I'm saying? I I I'm just concerned that. With the naming of an individual on buildings and so forth, that we could run into issues down the road like we did with the. Facility. So that being said, I don't have any issue with this particular renaming, other than. Going forward, I think we need to really look at that, to 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 set some procedures or rules in place so that we can go in a comparative. We have flexibility.
The other discussions, trustee Peterson?
Uh, naming it the Dolly Sperring Community Center, um, it would be used as a community center, I assume. Um, all ages could use it, and I think it. Um, all ages could use it. And I think it would be used more than it is now. So that would give us permission to use it. Uh, and uh, as far as Dolly Sperring, she was very, very. Kind to this community and then very generous. And I think it's very nice to name this after her. Um, very nice.
Any other discussion on this? On once going twice? Okay, well, we'll be talking about this hopefully five minutes. Um, any other business for the, be the whole meeting? Alright, can I get a motion to adjourn the uh committee, the whole meeting? Trustee Peterson, second trustee McNeil, all in favor? Any opposed? Alright, one opposition. We're adjourned at nine o'clock to get a five minute recess. Regular meeting to order at nine oh nine. Roll call please.
Here.
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 Here. Present.
Present.
Present. Um, one consent item is the approval of the June eleventh twenty twenty five board meet, meeting minutes as presented. Do I have a motion as a second? Motion trustee Maisick?
Second.
Second trustee McNeil, roll call please.
Maisick?
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Alright, uh, item number two is consideration and approval of payments of accounts payable as prepared by staff in the amount of seven hundred seventy five thousand. Eight hundred ninety dollars and nine cents. Motion trustee Maisick?
Second.
Second trustee Peterson, roll call please.
Yes.
Maisick? Luther?
Yes.
McNeil?
Yes.
Yes.
Peterson?
Hi.
Peterson?
Yes.
Alright, um, item number three, ask for a motion table if possible. Motion trustee Luther?
Second.
Second trustee McNeil, uh, roll call please.
Yes. Quick question, do I need to have a date certain or do we just move it?
Yes.
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Six one yes motion carries. Item number four, consideration and approval of a resolution renaming the former Antea Senior Center to the Dolly Sperring Community Center. Resolution number twenty five dash forty eight. Motion trustee uh Maisick?
Second.
Second trustee Pierce, roll call please.
Yes.
Maisick?
Yes.
Luther?
Yes.
McNeil?
Yes.
Yes.
Peterson?
I.
Peterson?
Yes.
Uh, six one yes motion carries. Last item is consideration and approval of the annual appropriation ordinance, ordinance number twenty five. Dash six dash twenty two. Do I have a motion in the second, waiving the secondary?
So I'm moving, wa- waiving the secondary.
Motion trustee uh Luther?
Second.
Second trustee Peterson, uh, roll call please.
Maisick?
Yes.
Luther?
Yes.
McNeil?
Yes.
Martina?
Yes.
Pierce?
Hi.
Peterson?
Yes.
Six one yes motion carries. Um, administrator's reports.
Couple of things, they're about, on the new village hall construction project, um, thanks for moving the, moving along swimming really over there. Um, it was starting to look like the building on the inside. So currently staff is coordinating a open house. The trustees and staff can get together and we'll see it once it's completed. It's kind of for a time to bring the punch list walkthrough scheduled for July eighteenth. To kind of identify things that need to be patched up or things that kind of aren't next to spec. Furniture is gonna be delivered uh week of the twenty first. Of course, then we have all the the network setup tech that has to be coordinated. But in light of that, we are working on logistics of a move. It's gonna be quite a process, even the village hall and many of the things that have been there for a lot of years. So we're working on a phased approach where village hall staff will first and parks and rec staff will over probably sometime in September as their programming wraps up. So it's not inconvenient to them and the community are used to finding them there. Uh, we're working on a lot of prep work for fourth of July festivities. Uh, our first is prepared as planned as it's all underway, both our operating plans, relative apartments, so there are a number of issues. Because of the significant change of moving all the. Uh, Williams Park to the park, uh, I think we're nearly ready and I think maybe he's really gonna enjoy what we have planned. The Williams Park uh construction project of partnership with the Lions Club, the actual build of the pavilion is completed. Um, it is still contained uh within the fence. There's electrical work that has to be done. As you know, we're gonna try to track, tackle that internally with staff, but there's been some staffing changes. So we're working with the Williams Club and a couple of other local contractors to identify the most cost effective.
I know there's been questions about whether the electrical work is being done, um, about some sort of payment system being added that's certainly there. If they're at part of our discussions.
So we're, we're looking at the options. Uh, we discussed it with um both the electricians that have taken a look at the job. Both of them agreed that like large overhead bands, like ceiling type bands would not produce a lot of effect. Uh, because you're already in an outdoor space in the shade. Uh, one electrician suggested that we could do like corner mount, corner mount like almost like. Five side barn style fans to a little bit higher velocity, that air a little bit better. Again, that would be uh kind of limited in its, in the area. That it would circulate the air. And the other electrician that we spoke to felt that really wouldn't get real value for fuck, no matter how we're gonna do fans. Because you're in the shade, all four sides are open and there's generally consistent breeze going through there, you know, I guess kind of chicken barbecue if it's hundred five degrees, you're maybe half a better one. But we're looking at all options for that. Uh, where was I here? Public worst building is getting ready to go out to bid. Um, Dennis said, is planning to try to be on track to present those bids. For approval first meeting in August, along with that tool, AIA contractor to see great impact to see for them to do our construction management also. Hopefully keep your fingers crossed for some good, good bids coming back for us. Uh, I M L uh is coming up. Rachel has sent out an email to the board. If you haven't seen that, it'll take place September eighteen twenty twenty Chicago. And Lieutenant, please let her know that later so she can take advantage of the block room rates that are currently available. And then the last thing I have is just wanting the board aware, um, and you know, you recently approved some changes to the village hall contract. Uh, to add the alternate for the uh village hall exterior sign as well as the landscape package. Uh, the prices that were incorporated into the actual uh labor materials itself were entirely encompassing of what the change rate will be. There will be a modest increase in the overall price that was presented uh once the um. The profit and bond portion is added to it, so expected probably about twelve to fifteen percent above, so a couple thousand dollars is not a real significant amount. But I just wanted to let the board know full transparency about that to improve. I'd have to exercise my spending authority to have seen that stuff. And I'll quote in our report, this is any questions?
Trustee Luther?
Um, not really a question, a statement. Since we're moving the fourth of July events to the new park. I've seen social media comments and actually been asked about the rules and what can happen at the new park versus what was happening at Williams and so forth. I mean, I've seen posts and had a question about tents, because I guess in the past it's been allowed. I would recommend, and if we could, put some type of announcement out there regarding what's allowed, what's not allowed. And be very direct and straightforward because we've had that with other events where we kind of send mixed messages and people get confused. So if you could put something out there that says specifically what they're allowed to do at Secoit Park, that would make it a lot easier on everyone else. Because then people hopefully will read it and pay attention, but.
Yeah, we've, we've addressed, or I shouldn't say we've addressed, we've been seeing those same comments come through. Um, so I guess they, there's gonna be a trust in a couple of different layers. Um, you know, there's a lot of, I think the primarily statements are primarily circulating around tents, barbecue and kind of things that people like to hang out do. So those two activities are already prohibited within the secret, are rules that were approved by the board. But in addition to uh just redistributing those rules broadly, we met with our communications team today, they're early competing. We did discuss social media posts here to go out to address some of these concerns. They're being held, um, we're gonna be communicating with our officers. Uh, they're gonna be assigned to the detail, be proactive in that if they see somebody, they got the tent to get them early on to say, hey, sorry folks, this is. Uh, so I think we'll be prepared. I'm sure there's gonna be some social media pullback, you know, or for the fourth of July because the, for the set the tent up, the barbecue grill, that kind of thing. Uh, and the staff meeting this morning, along with the mayor, uh, we did start talking about plants, you know, if it is hot, sunny, if you're gonna take the things, there's a lot of shade over there. So Katie is working right now to identify a space for a village tent that will go um somewhere along Orchard Street. Because Orchard Street is going to be closed for, for most of the day with events. So we're trying to find a place that we can place a larger village sponsored tent. To allow people to get out of the sun a bit.
If the lady was signing this around the perimeter, it says, no tents and barbecue's, so it's there that day. Because I can tell you from my experience, it, it, people get really cool with the time, you have to move.
Yes.
And they, they're, they're going to go down fifty thousand cent. They, you know, I would have known they'd even say, he's like, oh, I've already rented a tent and care of this. A public park and I'm going there, you know?
Well, and and then full transparency as well too. Um, the, the way that law enforcement operates is the ball throughout my career, right? If there was a day and time where, you know, you had any type of violation, if they refused to comply, right, it was hook them, book them and take them to jail, right? So I just want, want the board to know that if people, people are violating these, you know, we're gonna take enforcement actions. But it would never be anything that I would encourage or expect any of my officers to forcefully remove something from the park because they refused to comply with the rule. They would be cited, uh, they would be asked to be banned from the park, that would go through the whole trespass um scenario. But again, uh, with implementation of safety act, trespass is not a jailable offense either. So just understand that just because we're saying that there's not gonna be tents there. You know, somebody may have a tent. And I'm not gonna forcefully take your tent down. I'm not gonna have my officers forcibly drag them out of the park because they refuse to comply. It will have consequences. They won't have to answer that court, but there, things are a little bit different nowadays. So just trust that if there's issues, they'll be addressed properly. Above the top lines of our legislation.
I, that confuses the heck out of me. So you're saying that we can tell everyone that tents aren't allowed, it's in our ordinance. They, but someone can come and just pop up a tent and we're not gonna do anything to make it down.
I didn't say that. I'm not, we're not gonna do anything, trustee. We will cite them for violating it. But again, but we can't physically remove the tent. Because there's, or there are implications with seizing people's property. And if they say, I'm not taking this tent down unless you make me. The last thing I wanna do is escalate into a situation where I have my officers forcefully gauging and it has been a part and community that over a very low line of this.
I, I guess, I guess the only thing that concerned me is the uh, I didn't notice the apartment, I guess I should have thought about this or help or. Is that uh with the irrigation system, if somebody puts a stake in the ground there, that could cause like uh major problems. So it's, you know, I think we gotta tell people that messaging, like, there's no tents. And only, and because you could cause like hundred thousand dollars in damage with your little stake.
And I can tell you that the overwhelming majority of people are gonna need to comply, right? I mean, I'm talking the very worst case scenario, but I have to, you know. In our business, we have to play to the worst case scenario out there. Unfortunately, not everybody's, you know, it's like.
I, I get it, but I'm just, after seeing one of these people at the, the first concert, now that they don't care, they don't listen. And like that woman, like your post of a woman that such as in put up her tent, she rented it. You're gonna have people come with tents. And if we're not prepared to tell them, no, you can't correct it, or we, we're gonna make you take it down, you're gonna have tents all over the place, I can tell you that right now. Because once one person sees it, the other ones are gonna throw theirs up, because well, they have theirs up on this one, so you're gonna have a chain effect. And and you can expect, especially on the fourth of July, people are gonna do it because they're used to doing it. But I think we need to have something set up where.
The ample notifications. Again, the officer will be asked, people to comply and inform them that they need to comply or risk being banned from the facility. Again, it's just circumferable, that is, you know, the advantage nowadays is to use word of space, right? For a minor events, is it worth our police department being on five loss news across the nation for engaging somebody because they wouldn't take down a tent? To me, it's not. The board tells me it is.
It is, they're gonna have a mess up there, you know, force that rule. You know what my issue is? They can lose the R P P, that. Remember those?
Maybe you might remember that roughly.
Anything for the, also the administrator, but trustee Pierce?
Um, while you're up there, we're talking about the park, but, but, but I think it goes right back to.
Yes.
What's our, our future plans with that? Because it looks like our, I am, we developed, we designed the park and then redesigned it, then redesigned it, then redesigned it. Give up with some solution for it. Oh, I'm doing that right there, redesigning the description, everything may be having an impact on the programming stuff.
I messed this up, puppy off, Dennis. I do my best, uh, uh, mechanic engineer. So my understanding is, yes, that originally this system was designed to be more of a aesthetic feature, right? An inter- interactive feature that was gonna run on a pre-program sequence that it would turn on for five to ten minutes, shut off for fifteen to twenty minutes. And then go through this cycle continually, right? It was, it was gonna operate rain or shine, regardless of temperatures, all these kind of things during uh the operating season. Somewhere along the design process, um, conversations were held at the board level that we wanted to have it be more on demand type scenario. That kids would have to necessarily sit around waiting for twenty minutes. So we explored out with the designer, design team to add the baller with the. Uh, activation switch. That's the direction that we went. Uh, as you know, we've been having some problems. Uh, problems haven't been isolated to any one particular part. I think something like Dennis has had to have some of the control boxes replaced. Uh, there was different accounts of programming sequences. But the, the most recent problem seems to be origin, originating from the actual activation switch itself. But the problem is, is it's, it's not continuous, you know, so Dennis will see, uh, or hear that it's not working, right? He'll hop in his truck, he'll drive over there, ready to, to leave a pot of its computer, plug it in and gets there and the darn thing's working and kids are enjoying the, the water. Uh, he's replaced the component once, happened again, right? So now he's starting questioning is it the switch, is it not? He just recently had conversations with you, um, fountain maintenance contractor that we had, that we have that used to work for Fountain Tech. Who was the builder of the, of the feature and say they installed these ballers with these switches in other parks. And overall, it's a pretty reliable switch. So she's kind of having a questioning of whether or not we could have two switch failures in such a relative short period of time. It's, it's a purpose-built switch for like an eighty eight type activator, so it's used to kind of be instructing hit hard and it's, it's mechanical. It's a, it's a simple device, so we're, we're working through it.
But can the switch, when you talk with this person, can the switch be like reset the program and thousands of programs per, per speak?
Well, that, this right turned it over to Dennis.
That was one of the questions that I asked. Did it cause you some type of program, you know, reset or confusing? Because as that, as you press that switch, basically sets, sets a signal back to pro board to start program. I don't know if that's affecting that program, because it gets, of course, the start of the uh splash pad. It uh features delayed by for maybe thirty seconds, because the system has to build up pressure. And then it'll start working through the program that was designed to, to present. Uh, so I don't wait and hear back from her, I just don't know if that's the issue. She sees media level problem. Also, it's not like we can hook up the laptop and look at any type of errors or anything. It's not like your vehicle that throws a code and go back and see that code and what was. Uh, doesn't keep that data. So unless you catch it, that's the second element, can't tell what was malfunctioning to the program.
I just want to know, we're gonna figure out who's on base, because I'm not gonna be, I keep thinking that it just makes, makes that hang up.
Every kid over there hits that thing at least ten times before it goes up. They're, they're banging it.
I understand, yeah. So you could, I, I advise.
No, I mean, it. As, as frustrating as it is for uh the trustees and the young kids and anybody that enjoys it, it is for me.
I'm sure you're losing your mind.
I don't know, access, access or something. Then this may be a simple, simplified solution, maybe that would be simplifying it, but could they put something on there that like a green light goes on? With it, though it's activated, so like, so you're not just hitting, you know what I'm saying? So they know, like, I was at, I was at the, um.
You do see the lights light up.
I was like, what's it called? That was just that top ball and you gotta wave your club in front of the thing, keep waving, waving it, but then a green light comes on, you know, the golf ball's coming, so like.
It's like whack.
That would be a simple for me.
Yeah, I think, and even when it's running, you see the kid, is it running up the head?
So, so I got, and that may be my idea, just to communicate if people are like whacking, like he says in the last thing, but. Any of the packages that are fully behind the company that is something that's broken, for the places, this John Bell up. And now we're using a camera, former employee.
We know some, just tell on that today.
Is that, is there one key that's still in place for, I mean, we, we start paying for all these breakdowns?
We haven't paid for it. Uh, we've paid for this new company this year to start it up, because that was not part of the work. Right, yeah. Let's see that is in existence right now until uh early August. Uh, a lot for winterization, a lot of computer boxes, there's been two or three um programmed computer boxes replaced.
Two or three, um, programmed computer boxes replaced. And I believe at least two of a P file description, so if we're under warranty, we have not paid for those. Janon worked for Fountain Tech, who was the company that installed it. In construction. That individual. Basically closed the business down. The son, I believe, who worked for him at that time. There was an option and it didn't work out, so the son left. And this camp, they've opened a business, they are basically taking over a lot more to the. Of all the, uh, splash pads that Fountain Tech originally installed, it was honored for us. Uh, that was communicated through, uh, Mr. Lawson was one of the Fountain Tech and then this new. We've not been built for, anything that would be considered more.
That Dennis, is there a way of? And it probably not every time when it breaks down, but is there a way of doing manual overrides, like when that switch isn't working on. Ninety-five degree day that it would still maybe work under the programming, the old, the original ideas for a certain amount and be turned off or. Is there a way of like with a main master switch of turning it on and off?
It it is basically a switch, you go in there and turn it into manual mode and it'll run, so you turn it off. I, I personally tried to avoid doing that, uh, I understood, I did do it once. It came in at ten o'clock at night to try it down, because I didn't want to disappoint any kids. But if there is a time periods where that thing is running and it's raining out or there's hell in there. And no one will be getting calls because water's being wasted, so. I tried to avoid, um, doing that, I know that the water usage was a concern and that was one of the. The reasons we went with the Ballard, cause we just didn't want it rocking whatever, uh, whatever was enjoyed at.
So I get that, uh, I guess I'm not looking for a normal, uh, that not being the norm, but for like heat emergency days. Like what we had this last weekend when it wasn't exposed and it was ninety-five and that's when people get upset, so I was just wondering if. We were trying to set up a a policy or procedure where. On on either hot weather days or something where we at least keep it running for a certain amount of time. I I mean, I would be in favor of that, I know it's a pain to you, I didn't know if others had access to it or if it was just you or. Or how that override needed to work.
There are some, I try and keep it at a minimal just that you're just in states. Now, I will tell you that I don't know. How many people witnessed it not running, but the majority will say, I did Sunday, it was run down for a couple hours from what I am doing. On a Saturday and maybe a couple hours on Sunday, I was up there multiple times checking that along with some. Staff that were doing, doing, uh, doing calls, so. Um, I'm not sure if anybody provided you with an amount of time, but my understanding was it was maybe a couple of.
There at nine thirty at night, it was funding their kids to play in the Saturday night.
And it and it's not, it is not on a timer, it will only run between the hours at eight AM and ten PM, so. If they're there at six in the morning or they're at midnight, it's not, not gonna turn on.
And since you're, we're talking about this, have we looked at the water usage, I mean, I know that was a big issue before we got it running, now that's been running for about a year. Do we have any indication of what amount of water we're using, right, or what we thought it would use?
I can, I can collect the data and, uh, sure.
Anything else, Joe? Well, you have this, well, village clerk, if anything. Trustees, the reports.
I have a report, so I have a report this time around. Uh, spent my Monday with, uh, Public Works and, uh, you know, one of the, uh, the big takeaways is. That, um, there is a lot of maintenance, our parks all need a lot of work, uh, the sawmill. Uh, needs a lot of work, as we were talking earlier, we about, uh, Oakwood Knolls, I did have the opportunity, Dennis did. Provide me the opportunity to go out with him to go look at the culvert and, you know, we talked about the dredging and. You know, here's the thing, you know, from my perspective, uh, if we're gonna spend this kind of money going forward, uh, the sawmill is what needs dredging. Before the culvert and a Oak, Oakwood Knolls.
Yeah, the other thing that I also took, um, uh, a lot of, uh. Insight from was that. Using, uh, Mr. Green's words, it's like the perspective, so I garnered a perspective from the Public Works Department. And for that, I'm I'm very thankful for it, because one of the big things I I took away with was. That the fact that they are being very conservative with our money and the fact that they are, uh, going through and trying to do a lot of things in-house. And so for that, I go, I I applaud them and, uh, I'd say, you know, we are in in great hands and, you know, little insights that I had no idea was. I already knew that we were made up of fifty-five miles, uh, roads, but I didn't know we were made up of seventy-five miles of sidewalk and so. Again, uh, that to me was very enlightening and and the fact that the work never ends. You go from one season, one season gives you its issues and and dilemmas and you move on to the next and so for them, the work never ends and again. Look forward to doing it again, maybe next season. Thank you.
All right, thank you. The trustees, um, I think we have some other reports here, which are assistant village administrator.
Evening, Mayor Village Board, uh, first of all, I was on vacation last week, uh, so thank you, uh, Administrator Gutcha for. Uh, the time off, it was nice to be away with my family out of town and we didn't have any accidents or urgent foods. Uh, happenings in town, so it was nice to be able to relax for a moment, uh, so with that, I've abbreviated before and I just wanted to. Give an update on some of our business development, uh, activity with Kim, uh, earlier today, um, Kim helped Anna at the. New cafe, we put together ribbon cutting, um, yeah, so we had the ribbon cutting ceremony at the cafe at the park and went really well. Um, Daniel Katie's been working a lot with Anna and so is Dennis as far as, uh, making sure she has what she needs. Uh, to operate well, uh, from right to tell, talking to Anna today, I think I've worked. Uh, pretty well at the cafe with her, so that was exciting to to see that happen today, that was a lot of work, um. For a while, uh, to to get the doors open and to cultivate with today's ribbon cutter. Uh, also, Kim has been working with Maple Station Great Lakes and some of our, uh, local businesses. Uh, to promote shopping and, uh, dining and anti-op, some of our activities that happen in our community. Uh, to align with some of the, um, families that come to town for their Navy graduations that happen on. On Fridays, or I'm sorry, on Thursdays, uh, so the Navy base moved their graduation Friday to Thursday. And, uh, families, uh, used to come to town on Thursday and leave on Saturday, now they come on Wednesday and leave on Saturday, so there's. Excuse me, an extra day of, uh, shopping or, uh, tourism that happens with the Navy families, so we're. Working to cultivate some of that and attracting some of them to town. Um, and the only other thing is, uh, hopefully soon, we'll, we have a meeting tomorrow with our, uh, communications contractor. Uh, that that will have an update for our new website, so hopefully we'll have that running, uh, for our next meeting. Thank you.
Um, parks.
Well, I had a whole lot to share, but just so I'm done. Um, uh, thank you to all of you who were able to come out and to the entire village staff for making the Marshall Tucker Band Concert. A great success, I was really proud of the day and the turnout, um, it was a lot of hard work and I think everyone in town. Um, and from out of town who was able to show up that day really enjoyed it, um, the response on the internet was overwhelmingly positive. So, thank you very much, um, last week, we, um, had the Johnny Rustler and the Beach Farm Band, so if you were out there. Um, got to see the conga line and my children and it was very fun, um. And we had the opening of the farmer's market at Sequoia Creek, uh, park, which was lovely, we had twelve vendors out there and they all had. Pop-up tents that were not staked, um, they were weighted and, um, there was, I went around and talked with all the vendors and they were just so pleased, it's such a pretty. Atmosphere and, um, it was very, very nice, um, I got two plants and some other things, I can't go back to the farmer's market. Um, so it was lovely, um, we have, uh, the farmer's market again tomorrow, um, from four to seven, we've got fourteen vendors. Um, and at seven PM, we are welcoming the Jolly Ring Walts at the band shop. Um, last week kicked off Sequoia Saturdays, uh, where we have entertainment at the park in the Mormons Pavilion. Um, last week was Miss Jamie's Farm for, you know, geared more towards preschool age children. This week, we've got Magic Dave at one AM, so come on out, say hi to Magic Dave, um, that's an all ages show, everyone will be amazed. Um, and as, uh, Administrator Gutcha said, um, we are preparing for the Fourth of July. Um, a couple of things that I wanted to note that the quiet zone this year is different from previous years. It will be located in the downtown block from Park Avenue to Orchard, or excuse me, Orchard, um, due to the. Echoing effect, um, that takes place in that area, um, so we will be, um, getting that message out, we have a, uh. Social media post scheduled to go out on Friday with all of the, uh, rules and things that you all were speaking about previously. Um, and I wanted to make sure that we noted, um, with all of you specifically, in case you're talking to your friends, your neighbors, your family, um, the quiet zone will be in that downtown. Block. Um, we have fifty-three registered, um, entries for the parade as of thirty-five seconds ago and, um. Registration to enter the parade, um, and the deadline ends Fri- or excuse me, Sunday at five PM. Uh, so Monday morning, we will be finalizing the parade lineup to make sure everybody has enough room and. Everybody's where they need to be, um, we're excited for the party in the park, um, as Jeff said, we're looking, um, at getting. A tent, I've identified a placement, I think. Now we gotta find a big enough tent, um, to make sure that there's some, um, shade for folks, um, and. Think, I think that's it, does anyone have any questions?
Questions, trustee Grayson.
Uh, not necessarily a question, but I'd also like to, I think, uh, the fact that now I saw it on our social media post that we are allowing. Profits that come in at free charge and participate in our farming markets.
Oh, yes, I I don't know if I did that or if that was just a fake, but it makes sense to me, so. Yes, if the, like, for example, the library, um, is attending four of our farmer's markets and we're like, of course, I'm in, being a part of the show. Um, so we're gonna be, I want to be a good friend and a good neighbor and. Um, that certainly includes supporting all of our macro profits and other tax bodies. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, Dennis, anything else? A little splash pad?
Sure, why not? Um, just some recent, uh, highlights of work that, uh, the parks. Maintenance crew and. We'll see a lot of landscaping around town, like the village hall, the. Dallas Spirit Community Center, the Sawmill, Osmond Park over by hillside, the mentor station. Brooke Memorial, uh, stamping through there, we did, uh, polished everything, I did everything, turned all the bushes up, so. Kind of a big push for for myself, for them to do it just with fourth amendment and everything, so those areas look nice. Uh, also, we're, we're in the middle of buttoning up all concrete areas, one actually is owned by a PD. Uh, when they elected to do some landscaping to the island here, their, uh, rear entrance, the north entrance, so. We came up with a plan and we're working on that right now with some curb and sidewalk areas also. The water department recently completed their, their first round of, uh, lead sampling, uh, there's new mandates that. That basically. Was a little more strict than in the past, they had the district get thirty-hundred bottles to identify lead, uh. Lead homes or lead service line homes. Which then the owner would take five samples. Goes by a sample bag, bring them to the lab to be tested, so it's, it's a pretty large undertaking. A lot of credit to the staff, they came in on the weekends, worked after hours, adjusted schedule, a lot of the residents are. At home when we're at work, uh. Luckily, uh, all the lab results came back and were within within the band. Sometimes it gets a little nerve-wracking when a homeowner is taking a water sample and they don't probably do it or it's contaminated, it will fail. Uh, no matter what, still, uh, we got a good turn, uh, the ones that are in the project. Roughly right now, about fifty percent of the concrete roadway is fully removed and, uh. They're bringing that hack base up as they go, so they hit a small delay. At a Nykor line, uh, so that set them back, Nykor has to come in and re, uh, lower a few. Of the service lines, last year tried to get out of it, notified Nykor and they came in and then lowered like six of them, but. Some reason is fewer off, off their radar. Those are currently being done at here in the areas, Nykor out there, uh, lastly is, uh, IDOT project update. I attended a pre-destruction meeting last week and I apologize because I misspoke of the timeframe of this project, but it is for Route Fifty-Nine. Up to the south, uh, they are actually starting that project next week, also the work next week will be saw cutting. Dragged out Fifty-Nine, this is a bunch of pink parks on the curb in the roadway, uh, they'll be saw cutting the road, the curb. I'll be suing for at least a week or two and then I'll start to see the demolition of the curb, uh, they'll be milling that road. And then also maybe a game upgrades to the sidewalk, that's, that's the project that was in relation to. The pedestrian improvements at the intersection of one seventy-three and Fifty-Nine that I spelled wrong. Like all the curb, if you, if you drive and and look, you'll see all the paint lines that be cutting curb, replacing it, pulling it out. Uh, any of the roadway that they need to cut, so that their initial week is going to be saw cutting everything, then to see that one.
Do they ever give you indications of their plans or anything to that house that's, uh, living on top of the nine almost?
I don't believe IDOT has big plans, I'm not aware, this project is reserved, seen that they're gonna do widening and maybe there will be land acquisition or purchase of it, but. Uh, I don't have any indications from IDOT for, for including that.
Dennis, I did not have any, uh, requests for executive session, so. Good on that, that's, I think, a motion to adjourn. Trustee Peterson.
Second.
Second trustee McNeil, all favor, any opposed, our adjutant is nine forty-six.